Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I guess we will just go right down the line. We don't have reports or anything. Are we gonna wait to approve the minutes?
I know, I know you sent them, but I didn't read them because I didn't anticipate doing it tonight.
Before we do any of that?
Oh, roll call please, sorry.
Councilman Robb, here.
Get this.
Councilwoman Bincardi.
Here.
Councilwoman Drives.
Here.
Councilwoman Bozak.
Here.
And Councilwoman McCarty.
Here. Alright, now can we get this done? Alright, um, August thirteenth minutes, can we approve that in the next meeting?
Are we gonna forego approving? Yeah, we can approve it.
Well, we, I mean, I saw that we got it in the email, but I didn't read them because I was, wasn't anticipating tonight being special.
You thought you had two more weeks.
I thought I had two more weeks.
No, per, per week, fine, we can approve it that next week, no problem.
And, you know, I wanna get my red pen. Are they just...
I continue.
Is there more? They're not as vague? I'm just kidding, I have no idea.
I continue to do them.
I didn't. I know, I know. So, alright, we're just gonna go down to additional appropriations. So we have the budget reduction.
Correct, so this is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, resolution related to a budget reduction. Whereas the proper officers of the Town Council of Burns Harbor, Porter County, Indiana have determined that it is not necessary to decrease the funding originally appropriated in the General Maintenance Fund for county year 2025, than the amount that was fixed by the twenty twenty-five approved budget and finally determined in the annual budget under Indiana Code six dash one point one. Therefore be it ordained resolved by the Town Council of Burns Harbor, Porter County, Indiana, that need now exist for a budget reduction from the following fund name and for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the same. Fund name, General Maintenance, one one zero one zero zero three, category one, personal services. Uh, I'll read the last four numbers of each, of each fund. Three one one one, General Maintenance Superintendent, thirty-four thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. Three one one two, General Maintenance Labor Salary, ten thousand seven hundred sixty. Three one one seven, Maintenance Equipment, twelve thousand two hundred forty-six. Three one two one, General Maintenance FICA Social, two thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and seventy cents. Thirty one twenty-two, General Maintenance Longevity, one hundred and ten dollars. Three one two three, General Maintenance Health Insurance, eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and four cents. Three one two six, General Maintenance Medicare Taxes, eight hundred eleven dollars and seventy-three cents. Three one two seven, General Maintenance PERF, seven thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. Thirty one twenty-eight, General Maintenance Cell Phone, one thousand eighty dollars, for a total of eighty-one thousand five hundred fifty dollars and eighty cents. Duly adopted by the following vote of the members of said Burns Harbor Town Council this twentieth day of August, twenty twenty-five.
I think we did this last one. We did the reduction. What?
We, we talked about doing it and then we've realized we have to have a resolution to do it.
There, I thought there was one. And then what we had that didn't make the re, uh, that didn't make it in time for the public hearing was the actual transfer of the monies.
This is...
And I don't see that, yeah, so...
We talked about it right here in our last meeting.
And you approved it, but we did not have this reso, not have the resolution crafted.
So Resolution in the minute say, um, Resolution twenty twenty-five twelve was removed from that evening's agenda because it didn't make the, um, it didn't make the publication, it was a day late. And then, so I made a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five eleven, Bozak seconded it and that motion passed. Twenty twenty-five eleven.
We need twenty twenty-five twelve.
And then we have twenty twenty-five thirteen, so twenty twenty-five twelve is what was noticed for tonight.
It's the corresponding notice for twenty twenty-five eleven.
That follows the budget reduction.
Correct.
And that one is a public hearing.
We did not have these listed last month, though.
What do you mean listed?
We have to spell out where they're at.
It's in the minute, like, right?
It was, okay.
I mean, on, uh, it's funding purposes, yeah, because you said eighty-one five fifty-eight.
Eighty-one five fifty-eight.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the, no, it's okay, I just, because I was like, wait a minute, the additional appropriation was what Michelle and I missed by a day. So that's why we tucked it into this one tonight, yes.
Which is twenty twenty-five dash twelve?
Yes.
Resolution related to an additional appropriation of the building fund, so this is...
This is now taking the reduction and moving it around, yes.
So where the proper, sorry that I read that whole thing.
Well, I was gonna cut you off, but I don't wanna make you mad until later.
Whereas the proper officers of the Town Council of Burns Harbor, Porter County, Indiana have determined that it is not necessary to appropriate more money for county year twenty twenty-five than the amount that was fixed by the twenty twenty-five approved budget and finally determined in the annual budget under Indiana Code six dash one point one and whereas notice was duly given to the public in accordance with Indiana Code six dash one point one dash eighteen dash five A and Indiana Code five dash three dash one dash two B for a public hearing on a proposed additional appropriation and public hearing was held on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M by the Burns Harbor Town Council regarding the same. Therefore be it ordained and resolved by the Town Council of Burns Harbor, Porter County, Indiana, that need now exist for an additional appropriation out of the following fund or fund name and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Fifty-one eleven, Building Commissioner, six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. Fifty-one twenty-one, Social Security, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Fifty-one twenty-six, Medicare, one seventy-one and twenty-seven cents. Fifty-one twenty-seven, PERF, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. And fifty-one fifteen, Part-Time Clerk, five thousand dollars, for a total of thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-five cents. And then from fund name, General Town, into thirteen ninety-two, Miscellaneous Services, thirty thousand dollars. And thirteen fifteen, Town Engineering, thirty-eight thousand seventy-two dollars and twenty-five cents, for a total of sixty-eight thousand seventy-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Grand total of both funds, eighty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty cents. Duly adopted by the following vote of the members of said Burns Harbor Town Council this twentieth day of August, twenty twenty-five.
And it's a public hearing, yeah. Any comments for... Any comments against? You, you're my only audience. No, no comments from the audience.
No comments.
Okay. Alright, public hearing closed.
I'm making a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five twelve.
A second.
Further discussion? Roll call please.
Councilwoman Robb, yes. Councilwoman Bincardi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drives?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bozak?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarty?
Yes.
Alright, opioid, opioid relief fund, that should also be a public hearing, okay?
So that is twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution related to an additional appropriation of the opioid settlement unrestricted fund. Whereas the proper officers of the Town Council of Burns Harbor, Porter County, Indiana have determined that it is not necessary to appropriate more money for county year twenty twenty-five than the amount that was fixed by the twenty twenty-five approved budget and finally determined in the annual budget under Indiana Code six dash one point one and whereas notice was duly given to the public in accordance with Indiana Code six dash one point one dash eighteen dash five A and Indiana Code five dash three dash one dash two B for a public hearing on a proposed additional appropriation and public hearing was held on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five at five P M by the Burns Harbor Town Council regarding the same, therefore be it ordained resolved by the Town Council of Burns Harbor, Porter County, Indiana, that need now exist for additional appropriation out of the following fund or fund name and for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the same. Fund name, Opioid Settlement Unrestricted. Budget classification, two-two-five-six, into opioid settlement unrestricted distribution in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred dollars. Duly adopted by the following vote of the members of the Burns Harbor Town Council this twentieth day of August, twenty twenty-five.
Public hearing, open. They're already shaking their heads. Comments from the audience, comments for, for hits? Public hearing closed.
I'm making a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen.
Right, yeah, I'm sorry, it's fifteen.
Sorry, fifteen.
They're like, we're never coming again.
We're waiting the hallway.
Councilwoman Robb, yes. Councilwoman Bincardi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drives? Councilwoman Bozak?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarty?
Yes.
If everyone can initial that, then we'll pass that on to Jeremy tonight and he can get that going.
Initial, or it says, oh. Yeah, that's three.
Three or more. Alright, um, transfer funds, um, fire?
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, Town of Burns Harbor Appropriations Transfer. Be hereby resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Burns Harbor, Porter County, Indiana that the following transfers of funds be made from the twenty twenty-five budget. General Fire, two thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-five cents from travel expense, four one thirty-one, in a part-time salary, for one fourteen. Seven hundred twenty from travel expense, four one thirty-one, in a cell phone allowance, for one twenty-eight. Five hundred dollars from uniforms, for two forty-four, into other materials, for two thirty-seven. One thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars from uniforms, for dash two forty-four, into miscellaneous services annual physicals, for dash three ninety-two point one. One thousand dollars in gasoline, for two-two-one, into other equipment, for dash four-four-four. Two thousand dollars in oil and diesel, for dash two-two-two, into other equipment, for dash four-four-four. One thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty-two cents from promotion of business, for dash three nine six, into other equipment, for dash four-four-four. One thousand dollars in furniture and fixtures, for dash four-four-one, into other equipment, for dash four-four-four. Seven hundred dollars in office equipment, for dash four-four-three, into other equipment, for dash four-four-four. Eight hundred dollars from water, for dash three-five-three, into miscellaneous service, for dash three nine two. Eight hundred dollars from freight, for dash three-two-one, into miscellaneous services, for dash three nine two. Two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars for instruction, for dash three-one-one, into miscellaneous services, for dash three nine two. One thousand dollars from other supplies, for dash two-four-three, into miscellaneous services, for dash three nine two. And three hundred dollars from other garage and motors, for dash two-two-four, into subscriptions and dues, for dash three nine one. Pass and adopt this twentieth day of August, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve, real quick. Sorry, second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Thank you.
Uh, sorry, have questions?
Local Road and Bridge Fund?
Those for the refund?
Yep. This is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, Town of Burns Harbor Appropriations Transfer. Be hereby resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Burns Harbor, Porter County, Indiana, that the following transfers of funds be made from the twenty twenty-five budget. Local Road and Bridge Grant, seventy-six thousand ten dollars and seventy-one cents from Miscellaneous Services, zero-one dash three nine two, into refund, ninety-nine dash nine sixty. Pass and adopt this tenth day of September, twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second. Roll call please.
Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Any, any post? Have questions?
And then, I just wanted to make sure, I know that the building department put transfers, but was that just something that could be handled outside?
The building transfers were inter-fund, so I think those, I can do those without a resolution.
Okay, I just, just checking.
And then Unsafe Building Fund, do we have?
Uh, the, uh, the resolution is crafted as Clay. Meaning... Meaning I, I wrote the resolution and I asked Clay to review it.
Okay.
And I had her back, uh, she just finished, no, so, no, no follow-up this far.
Why would it expect September anyway?
Resolution is done.
Great. Budget meeting? Here we go.
Before we go over there, can we, um, talk about the, uh, pothole out here? We only have one bid for it and everybody wants to get that repaired. Brandon reached out to multiple companies and we got one company to respond back. And he had put an email that we discussed on tonight's conference, I just wanted to make sure. It was for eighty-three hundred dollars, eight thousand three hundred dollars.
Did he send that to us?
Yes, it was sent in an email.
Uh-huh.
And it's the Sutton Company that is the only company that responded to us.
Did he only attempt once to contact those other companies?
No, he can't, multiple times already, he, he tried to contact people multiple times. Um, some of the problems are is that people are not responding back to us, um, including the Nards, because we still don't understand the bill from the Nards that had been paid, which also I wanted to ask about, why that the bill, the, the account from the Nards is still closed. That's not been paid yet.
That's what Maggie was working on.
Yeah, I thought we took care of that. Let me check, I'll check.
Brandon's getting, the people he's talking to, they're not responding back to him because we're building up a poor relationship. Brandon says that they're not responding back to him because bills have been paid. And that's my concern at this point, from going down, one response back from, uh, Sutton Company. And they do have openings next week to do this, that's why I wanted to push this into this, because everybody wants to get that hole repaired.
My only question with that is, they're just fixing the hole.
Right.
But is this gonna happen again, like farther down?
They're going to scan beyond that point and let us know if there's any other issues with that. But in order to get the hole fixed, so we can use that halfway again, this is what it would cost to do at this point. So, that's why I'm asking, I don't know, what do you, what the council?
Anybody have thoughts on this?
Do you, um, I mean, yeah, we should get it fixed and I'm looking at this message, he says they, they are the only company who's responded in over a week. So, he didn't say he reached out to three and he only heard from one?
Yeah, he, he did tell me.
He doesn't say that in documents.
And I would not want to rush, obviously, I'm not saying it's a good thing, but if there are other companies that he could reach out to.
I just know when I talked to him personally out front, was it Friday? It was last week. And he said he had called just like two days prior. I said, okay, well then call them back. Like, reach back out to these companies and try to get, whether he did, I, it's, I don't know.
I had personal conversation with him, but again, I know it's not an email, which is what you're requesting.
Well, no, I'm just saying, yes, I believe that he's called three, but unfortunately, when we're in this situation, like, we need to know who.
I understand. I mean, and he's on vacation till first and next week. He just wanted to make sure that we talked about it, so we, you know, some direction to go, so that everybody doesn't, I mean, he has contacted these people multiple times and got no response back from them.
Nick, do you know our fund balances in LIT and CCD, because I think that's where we would have to pay for it. I mean, I guess that would be my question. I do think we should get it fixed and I, I believe people aren't calling back, but I also don't know what our balances are currently.
Right, so the quote is only for, my understanding of the quote is only for to fix the hole. It's not to snag anything, is it?
So don't we have to fix the pipe before we fix?
I don't know. So is that maybe extra later on down the road?
Well, I don't know. And if it's already broken, the pipe is exposed.
It says spot up here, but in, in that original email from Brandon, it says that there are damaging, damages to the existing pipe.
So it does not appear to be repaired. And why would we patch over it if we already have it exposed?
With the piece of pipe that says actually plastic and it would collapse, and that's what caused the hole to happen. I mean, I was out there with Brandon looking at this and so did Jen, Jenette came out also and looked at it. Um, so he's been putting a solid piece of pipe in that has collapsed, which is over the area where it's collapsing.
We just don't know how far that pipe is.
He's going to, he's going to take a camera and look the other way in both ways and will recommend whether or not there's.
And that quote is for all of that?
No, this quote is only for repairing.
But if they fix the piece, it sounds like if they fix the piece, they're not gonna have to tear that up again, but they might have to tear up something farther down to fix it, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So they're just doing it in pieces. But I don't disagree that we should fill the hole, fix it.
Right, we just don't wanna fill this hole, you know, you just don't wanna put a band-aid on it.
No, I don't think it's a band-aid, I think it's fixing that spot, knowing that there could be potential problems elsewhere, but that they're gonna, that they'll know and then they'll have to quote more to fix the rest.
Was that the one where it's like the?
In theory.
Where you see the pipe with the.
Or just saying, in theory, it's terrible, like, it's like corrugated pipe.
So CCD miscellaneous services?
CCD, or sixty-nine, nine, twenty-eight.
Is that miscellaneous services?
No, that's the whole shank.
Okay. Well, I mean.
I understand that, I don't know. We pulled an anhole, like.
Do you know, does that also tell you what, I, I guess, not that, I, I, maybe I misspoke, Nick. Not the fund balance, but what's left that's not been spent from appropriated this year.
That was the end appropriation report right now, and it's defined. I'm sorry, I didn't know we were doing this tonight, or I didn't.
Well, he's looking at Brandon and also wanted to use the camera that they have for the sanitation department, but that is out of service right now. So that'll be, that'll be disposed later.
Yeah, that's a bigger issue.
Absolutely.
We might have to, we might have to buy a new one. I told him that.
He was supposed to get, did he ever send the quotes for anyone?
He's working on that.
Because I have not seen them.
Miscellaneous Services, unexpended, seventy-seven, nine forty-three, seventy-five.
And, and that's, okay, and then what's the equipment, like CCD, is there a line CCD equipment?
Uh, CCD other equipment, that's one four four four. One oh five, two fifty-eight, thirty-five cents.
And then what about LIT, or it's still seated, Nards?
Uh, give me one second.
Okay.
Uh, miscellaneous services, thirty-one thousand two hundred. Uh, other equipment, one oh one, two fifty-nine, seventy cents.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, quote for our new Sutton Inc. at eighty-three hundred dollars to fix the sinkhole.
Second that.
Further discussion? Where to come from where?
Out of where?
Oh, I'm sorry, from, um, CCD miscellaneous services. Thank you. I don't, I don't foresee that they would cut that same spot up, do you know what I'm saying? Like, that is gonna fix that, they'll see what's elsewhere and then they may have to pick up and fix on either side, but I don't, I, yeah.
That makes sense, I've been thinking about that part of the answer.
And then my second to her.
Oh, roll call.
On favor?
Aye.
A post? Have questions? Thank you, Paul.
Nick, do you feel, I know we're closing out, but do you feel like these numbers you just gave me are gonna be accurate at the end of June?
Those are pretty damn close.
I'm just curious, because you know, this is what's been appropriated of things that we could still use money for, so that's why I was asking.
These are accurate.
Okay. Alright, um, are we moving on to budget meetings? I'm good. You good?
I'm good.
Hi.
Hi, hello.
Welcome, thank you for being my audience, sorry to keep you on the spot.
Yeah, no pressure.
No, right here. I, I had, um, reached out to Kim when, um, Shepherd Insurance provided our property casualty quotes for the year. And theirs had increased slightly, so I had let Kim know that and just asked of how she wanted to handle that in the budget, so there was two changes to the line items. Um, reducing ag and sand by five hundred to cover the thousand dollar increase to property and casualty insurance. Otherwise, I don't have any questions. Um, I was gonna say, I mean, and they, you know this, they, they know this, and I, I'm just writing the notes that the, their budget is, like, the, so, well, maybe if you looked at what they're shooting. So the levy that'll be raised is like one eighteen, but the budget that was turned in is one twenty-one, but the difference is generally picked up in the non-reverting of the gate fees that they bring in, so just, just as a note for the record. Were you guys, so there's nothing to budget for capital, the non-reverting capital, right, because it's empty?
Yeah, nothing, I mean.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't think there was anything in it, so.
We, we used all the money for, um, Corlins.
Right.
I don't, I don't know of any developments.
But even, yeah.
Process that we need to be.
I just wanted to make sure that that one should not be budgeted this year.
Do we know what we brought in for vacancies this year?
Uh, about forty-six hundred dollars this far. That, that's just like an estimate, that's, um, like, I'm like eight receipts, that's the grand total for the seasons.
Okay. Does that include your rentals or those are separate?
No, that isn't a rental, correct.
So gate fees count rentals?
Correct. And then, uh, there were, you know, a few rentals before season started as well, but that's for gate collections, that's what we have.
Yeah, not for the rental.
Not for winter rentals, correct, just for, um, Memorial Day through Labor Day rentals and gate fees. They all go through the register.
Do we know how much came in from out-of-season rentals?
I don't have that figure right now, but I can get that.
First question, okay.
Um, it's, it's minimal, um, because it's only fifty dollars to rent a building, so.
Right, right.
And we don't rent the shelters during the winter, so.
It'd be a cold one.
Yes.
What about during the polar plunge, I mean?
You're gonna do it this year?
Are you? Are you gonna do it?
Oh, she just volunteered herself.
Yes, I think Tony said last year.
I'll be the light car for the polar plunge, I'm like, I'm just throwing your light, I'm just throwing your buoy, I'm out, go ahead.
Okay. It was amazing, last year.
How many people do it?
Pardon me?
How many people do it?
Uh, we actually, four year, yes. Our first year, we actually had a really good year. I couldn't even believe it, so, yeah.
If I could get a boat, I'd go, I just, I can't get in the body of water, I just, I can't do it.
I'll, I'll do it, I'll do it, you do.
I can't.
I did it, I did it there, I did it. Current continent, and then we had seasonal, season, season. Yeah, there were like four people that just go to all kinds of polar plunges. And they were in there for like five minutes. Yeah.
You guys are impressive, like, I, no.
We were.
Yeah, for our first time, we were very excited about the turnout, so.
Um, I do have another question, I don't know if I bring. What was I gonna ask you?
The money for the sidewalks in Corlins, the seventeen, I had it written down, but I don't remember. That was coming from the town, correct?
Yes.
To finish.
We do not have the funds, I, I do have the, the years.
Yeah, that's enough.
Somebody else took some money out of that.
And I also, um, contacted multiple places. One, um, company, Bart Rosa, did finally call me back and said, he is just too backed up, he does not have, he cannot do it. He's just way too far behind. Um, Noiki Properties, I contacted them three times, still don't answer back. And David's Lawn Care is the only one who answered me. And when we received the quotes last time, they were the best quote, um, anyways, but... So for seeding and grading of the property, um, just the large rectangle where the playground equipment is, is nine thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Was that part of your guys' assumption previously? So this is in addition?
Yeah.
And then, um, for the sidewalks, for the sidewalks and then the grading along the sidewalks and then seeding when they put the sidewalks in, because it will disturb the, um, land.
Surrounding area.
Twenty-three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the sidewalks.
I remember what I was gonna ask, what is the current gate fee?
What?
The one, like, what is the, the, it's five dollars?
For car, it's five dollars for car and then five dollars, um, for Burns Harbor residents for the whole season. And then twenty dollars for Porter County, or actually for just. And then twenty dollars for Porter County or actually for just anyone outside of Burntire Harbor for the season is twenty dollars.
And how long ago, how has it, oh, I've been that way for a really, really long time or have you increased it in time recently?
Oh, never mind. We have not increased it, no.
When people hear the five dollar charge, they turn around. So we're lucky.
Well, if it's seven to get into the dunes, I feel you know like.
Right, right. Yes, we have not.
They turn around.
The same thing with the rental. The rental's been fifty dollars for a long time now. We haven't done it.
Uh well, it's usually thirty-five dollars a year round, but since we don't charge for cars in the winter, it's fifty dollars. So it's a it's um more expensive in the winter like per se, but during the summer, we get the per car charge.
Okay.
So that has been raised.
Okay.
But that's the only, um and then we raised kayak and rowboat rentals from three dollars an hour to five dollars an hour.
And does that, um the rental money is that lumped in with this gate fee and rentals of forty-six hundred?
Correct. Because we only rent them when we have lifeguards, so that's only true. You know, more are they to Labor Day.
Anybody have anything? Would David's put this up? No, we would we would have somebody put the sidewalks in. This is just the quote for after the sidewalks are in.
No, the the nine thousand is for grading and seeding and the twenty-three thousand is the sidewalks, so total it would be thirty-three two fifty-six.
Together.
Yeah.
Forty-three.
So the twenty.
Thirty-three two fifty-six.
Thirty-three two thirty-six.
Yeah, thirty-three two fifty-six, yeah.
Eighty-three.
And then like some odd change, like thirty-three cents or something like that. Um yeah, so the twenty-three thousand is the concrete, the sidewalks, the seeding, that's everything.
Only within that area of the sidewalks.
Both, no, both sides.
Well, that's what I meant, on both sides.
Uh so it would connect the sidewalk basically on both sides to go in front of the, okay.
Correct, around, yes. Correct.
Is there a drawing of the sidewalks or I mean where that's actually going in the path, where that path is gonna be? Is there?
It's gonna connect to the existing sidewalks.
There's sidewalks on either side, cause there's houses, so we'll just continue the sidewalk from either side.
Yeah. There's just two sections of where the that blocks, there's the sidewalk.
Oh, this is across the front of the.
The park.
The park.
The sidewalk will run in front of the park.
Yeah.
We don't know what the line of feet is. Did they in their quote, did they give a line of feet of that?
We do. We told we looked it up on the G Portland G I S website like.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, a person just gave a quote should actually have a many feet of sidewalk they're putting in.
Can you include that in the law?
Forty-four hundred thirty-two, um four inches thick, four inches of concrete and five feet wide.
Lineal feet.
Just to match the other sidewalks that are there.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Four hundred and thirty-two foot.
Feet long?
Mm-hmm.
Five foot wide from one end to the other. Okay, thank you.
Correct. That's on both sides of the park, so that's on Golden and the other side of the park is.
Right, or connect to the blockway.
Correct, both sides.
Seso, is that Seso?
Ses- not Seso.
Seso.
Okay.
I know the road's back there.
They said it wrong until he wrote it away there and then we're good.
Is that the last thing that needs to be done at the park then and it finishes it off?
Yes, and then, um, once all of that's done, um George can do uh like a concrete pad for the benches that we're gonna put there and stuff like that. He just he can do that himself.
Oh, he has to wait till the seating and grading is done.
And do they have a schedule? Did you say that? I'm sorry. Like if you were if if they if they were to get the okay, do they have a schedule?
Yeah, he he said that he could start within two weeks.
So I'm just looking at these funds and because I think would site, well, not that it matters, but if you move from CCD services to equipment, you can just transfer monies. Is that right? Am I right in saying that?
Uh give me, can you repeat the phone numbers?
No.
Okay.
You gave me the numbers and I run. I'm just asking because in the services line, we have substantially less than the equipment lines. So not knowing what's still out there that may have been approved for other people, do you know what I'm saying? If there's things, I don't think there are, but is that easy to just move?
Yeah. Yes, I can do that without resolution. You just have to.
Because what's so I'm I'm gonna guess that seeding and grading would be considered a service. Would the sidewalks be considered? I don't think I think they would they be equipment or a service?
They're providing a service. They're not.
Or what do you mean?
Well, I know, I got it. So I'm just asking.
Well, I I mean, there you seems like they would be, they're providing a service.
Yeah. Yes.
In terms of funds, would it be building and land?
No.
What was the quote for the seeding? I got the concrete right there.
Um nine thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Tony, I can look up.
No, I think I mean, I I think that if there, it's just like, yeah, I just wanna if you can move monies, is that all one quote, Kim?
Um the seeding is one quote and then the sidewalks are another.
But it's both with David's?
Yeah.
I believe Kim sent them to you and Jennifer.
Mm-hmm. Nine five eight six.
Twenty-three.
Point six zero.
Point six zero?
Yeah.
And the sidewalks twenty-three six fifty.
Point two three.
I would I would make a motion to approve David's Lawn Care uh quote for seeding and grading of nine thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty cents to be paid from CCD.
Second that. Any discussion? Roll call please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
And I make a quote for the David's Lawn Care invoice for sidewalks of twenty-three six fifty and twenty-three cents to be paid for from CCD.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the questions, Mark. Kids play with it and they love it.
And I know the residents will definitely be.
Good.
They do. No matter what.
No matter what.
Listen, you, it's amazing.
I mean, every time I go there, our kids playing on it, so.
That's good.
Thank you.
And it is all about the kids.
Yep.
That's what it all comes down to. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll work on that email from, okay.
Yes. From Chris.
Chris.
Chris. I don't know where I was saying.
John.
I can't remember yet.
Oh, the one in the back of our neighborhood.
Yeah.
Negra.
Yeah, I said.
Yeah. As much as I think they think it's a good idea, I don't think they realize how much commercial equipment is.
They have no.
Correct.
A swing set isn't upwards of twenty plus thousand dollars, so.
Yes.
We know that.
That's why, that's why it wasn't included.
It's not a Costco swing set. It's not a Costco swing set that you can put.
Right.
And it does need, I mean, the park board feels that it needs to be installed by a professional in installation.
I am, I completely agree with you.
Okay.
Oh, for why?
We have no corners on any of that, because ultimately it comes back on us.
Yeah. No.
So while I understand people's want to help, if they want to help that much, we need money. We don't need labor, we don't need anything else. We literally need cash.
That's what, that's what it is.
And so I'm in the process of getting a quote before they come to our meeting of, um, what this means that will cause install with mulch and the plastic safety gates around it.
Yes.
To let them know that everything else was approved and whatever they want to add at this point, I suggest they start fundraising or doing whatever they plan on doing, but what you did, love.
Well, if we had your support, so thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. All of us is a need, so. So I am glad you're in and glad to see the kids using it. And even as we were, like they were installing and I was there all the time and the kids were just, thank you for bringing a parking for us. Thank you for bringing a parking for us.
It's the adults, it's not the kids and it's for the kids, so yes.
I walked by and there were a couple of little kids in there with uh plastic like Menards shopping bags picking up um like little rocks and.
Oh.
We just wanna get these out of the way of the new of the new playground that you're gonna put in. This was before anything was even there. This was after you when you put the sign up.
It's a mix.
Like a rock, I'm gonna say.
They were little.
Give them a shovel, maybe they can remove some of the dunes.
I have kids in a big like like construction trucks in the mulch loading it up and dumping it like this the other day, yeah.
Yay, thank you. Thank you.
I know.
You're welcome.
End of your time.
Yeah. Bye, Joe.
Okay, lifeguards and this. Just like we're bringing this is what.
Yeah, but that I'm well, no, I mean.
But it's for. No, no, I understand what you're saying, but that's like, yes, but no, like their budget covers what it covers and then those fees cover what it's short. So however they first.
Yeah, but I'm just saying there's not a lot of room for growth, we're not.
Sure, like what we bring in in rentals and gates doesn't.
I feel like it doesn't cover. The only thing that could increase would be the rental fee of fifty dollars because the gate fee, if you increase, it's just coming down more people.
No.
Literally the dunes is seven.
But also the rental fee, we, I mean, it's just a slowly.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, there are some people that have parties.
Yeah, but I feel like. But I feel like a hundred dollars is not a bad.
No.
Sure. Yeah, you could, you know, look compare to like what is it to do at Dogwood Park and what is it to, you know.
I mean, I'm pretty sure those are two fifty plus. You have to put a deposit down, like there's a lot.
We have a deposit, but yeah, I think there's a hundred dollar deposit.
But I feel like a hundred dollars is not a bad fee for.
Even if we just like slowly, I guess, you know.
Like up to seventy-five and then and then increased it.
Yeah. Just to, you know.
Well, then it brings in more money.
I worry, I worry about, yeah.
Then it brings in more money. Outside, right there standing.
Oh.
And it the park rental is one of the cheapest rentals in the area.
Yeah.
Like the other parks are awesome, their rentals are awesome.
Yeah, so I feel like if we did increase it, say twenty-five dollars, it could jump to seventy-five. But we could literally say, just so you know, this may also increase, like we are looking to increase this a little over time.
I lost the ring.
I don't want to be thrown in.
Same.
Either. So Jen and I spent some time looking at it and Joe, the only thing that we saw that and this is really nitpicky, just because. I mean, it's just nitpicky. So two twelve stationary and printing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh I believe the line was twenty-five hundred, like you it actually increased. It went from twenty-five to fifteen. Do you see that or did you print it recently? Cause I've had changed it.
I printed it recently, so I I showed I showed that area to highlight it, right?
Yes, so we just so we just not it doesn't it just so it was twenty-five and two thousand, I believe. But then it like you've only spent six hundred so far this year, so it was like, why would that have increased when you haven't spent even, you know, half of? And so again, it's nitpicky just because.
Right, right, I understand.
To, you know what I mean?
It's true.
Um if you've only spent six hundred to date or at this point, that was that to date. So are you okay if it's two thousand and fifteen hundred? I mean, obviously if I don't have.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I.
I don't have a note, although, um, I do have that Lori made some notes about third and fourth quarter purchases. But even still, if you've only spent six hundred.
Right.
I mean, it's nitpicky, I get that, but still, it's, you know.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think that there's room in places if it ended up coming up lightly, slightly short, but I don't know.
Right. The the only thing I wanna make sure of is the stationary and printing, so that would be like the cost of envelopes and sending out stuff.
Yeah, no, I wrote down, so books for licenses, receipts, uh and I noted those are purchased third and fourth quarter.
I think we're at we're at six hundred and fifty now.
Okay, and if you look at the previous two years, you've only spent nineteen eighty-six and then the previous year, seven fifty-two.
Yeah. Okay.
So you, I mean, like you still have, you know, fourteen hundred and then like even with the other one, you've the that line's never reached the fifteen hundred that was budgeted.
So if you need to, you could just move the money.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that I know that's nitpicky, but I feel like we need to get everything in a really good place. That's my personal opinion. Everything, you know.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
And then, um, you guys increased your health insurance percentage, so that's just yellow just cause it's health insurance.
Okay.
And then, have you, because you have you spent any, you haven't spent any inspector's wages so far this year, right?
No.
No, and I think you should keep it there, but again, there's some that, right, you can, I mean, if you had to, I think you should keep it, but. And then, so Jen and I didn't see anything glaring, right?
Yeah.
Like we've we, I don't know how I don't know how the rest of you guys feel, but we didn't see anything like glaring with the building, but I but I do wanna say that the process and maybe this has been said before, but the process is, right, we turn these numbers into the state, they'll come back in November and say yes or no.
Right.
So while this is yours today, if they come back in November, we might have to cut, which I hope not, cause I feel like we're pretty close to what they're gonna give us, so that we should be good. Um but just know that, like I'm okay with what they budgeted. I think they did a good job.
I'm too.
And so so long as the state is like stamp, then this should be your budget.
The I have a question on the telephone three twenty-three.
Yeah.
Um that they only increased that because that was telephone and internet, but then we realized that we could get rid of two phones.
So should that be less?
So I think that there's room that that could be less.
To come down. So you know what? I made a note.
Run to thirty-five eight fifty.
Yes.
Yeah, so I we can, I made a note to look at that later because we can find out exactly what your internet is and exactly what your phone is and adjust it if we need to, before Nick puts the final numbers in.
Yeah.
I totally forgot, that's why it's red, cause I meant to go back and look at it, but um I'm gonna see what everyone's telephone is, cause it shouldn't fluctuate really anymore. It should just be a straight up fee.
It should be a straight up fee.
Straight up drawbill, yeah. So I have NICO plus your Comcast internet is what's in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
So how many phones do you have in the building now?
Um.
I originally had.
Four.
Okay, so four and then you have the three street phones. Because you pick up the phone bill and I think they pick up other things.
Right.
Okay. Okay, that's what I have here, so we'll, I made a note.
Total seven.
Yeah, I made a note to double check what that dollar is.
Okay.
Yeah, for everybody. Um and then actually, I don't know if you noticed, but your insurance line three forty-two is projected only to be three hundred and eighty-nine dollars for your property and casualty insurance. And your most of your insurance comes from your automobile, so it's three fifteen for the um truck and seventy-one for excess, which I don't know what that is. So your total was only three eighty-nine, so, um, but that's always kind of been, you know, what's it gonna be, you know? But Shepherd was able to give us projections and can you get into this spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you go back to the beginning, there's a tab that says property and casualty.
Yep.
It's got twenty-five and twenty-six in there. It's got twenty-five and twenty-six in there. You can see exactly what you've been like what you've been billed.
Something that I know, did you talk about MS four helping out with inspections with MS four and that is that you talked about at all?
Yeah, I discussed.
Kind of, but we have to come up with how that's gonna get paid.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I reached out to Shen.
Yeah.
To ask him his opinion on that or what he thought. He said that it'd actually help a lot a lot.
Okay.
Because it's really busy.
And I know that we talked about it, but I didn't I didn't feel like you were like a yeah, do it or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's willing to do it, so that's why I wanted to make sure we talked about what might need to be put in the budget to cover.
Hmm, I think we needed a separate MS four budget to keep it separate. Yeah, especially with the MS four, but it could be, I know when Joe and I talked. I talked about trying to make it a stipend.
Yeah.
And that way if Joe does it, but then it shifts to Brandon or like maybe one day Mike wants to take it on if like you're you're like, I'm too busy and I can't, we can shift it between people. But one of the things we need is definitely um an MS four fund and we can start from the beginning. And I have some ideas, but. Sure, go ahead.
No, I'm just I'm asking.
I'm saying, go ahead. Uh, yeah, it's on my list and I have some ideas, but.
Alright.
As long as the state stamps it, otherwise otherwise I think that once Nick puts in the budget and we adopt it, they send us back the seventeen seventeen eighty-two in November and then that'll tell us what we're gonna get. And if it reduces like what we want, we'll have to readjust everyone and.
Yeah.
Or however we decide to do that and let you know, but.
So you find that out in November?
So you should, yeah, so we should be able to let everyone know in November what you're working with for next year.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Do they know or?
I don't think so, unless you have something here.
You guys got anything else for building?
No, I was just looking here.
She was asking about.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
About the wish list stuff.
Yeah.
Dear Santa.
Right.
But who's on the naughty list? I've been checking it twice and I'm just saying.
But I mean.
I understand that a lot last time.
I'm glad you brought that up though because I do think and Brandon wants this too for the street that we do need to look at investing in cameras.
Uh-huh.
You know.
And we've been talking about that.
For a while.
Like owning our own.
Do I? What'd you say?
No.
Like exterior cameras, like for them for security cameras.
Around the buildings.
Around the buildings.
Okay, I thought we were just, yup. Okay. So I mean, I I personally would like to try to make that a priority of the things that they've asked for. And I already I already told Joe I wasn't gonna lie that Tyler Technologies, I think is 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 out of reach for the town, but.
Yeah.
You know.
But dear Santa.
I can't believe how many municipalities actually failing. It's a lot.
Do we? Agree, yeah.
Yeah. It's a lot of money.
And I see you have siding, but that would be just for your portion, right?
Yeah.
And I understand that and it would be awkward to do your portion and then the street would look really, really bad. So.
Well, the street's mostly garage doors which have been replaced, so it would just be above their garage doors and above their office area, so they're they have nowhere near the.
I know, but what I'm saying is if we replace his, everyone else is gonna look bad and I don't. I mean, I guess I guess aesthetically, but if it's coming down to cameras or siding.
Cameras.
Cameras. I'm just saying, right? But that doesn't mean that something's not gonna become available or something like that, but. Cameras definitely would I highlighted as a priority.
Yeah, yeah.
That we just access to.
Does he get that?
It's also your budget to do with as you please.
That Jeremy has an actual bomb or is he sick?
So you would just take the money from street. Put it all in building and then pay for the siding all out of building. You don't need to pay for siding in two separate ones.
But I but we wouldn't pay for siding out of their budget.
But I know you definitely went through C C D or CD.
I mean, we would not. I I don't know why we would budget like those kinds of expenses because it's more than after, you know? I I'm not, I'm just saying if depending on how much the street costs and it's just a huge amount, it just to me, I'm one of five, it just seems silly to make yours look. You know, but it should stay on the list because you never know.
Yeah.
Yeah, look, I would look for an alternative to the Tyler Technologies though.
I I have been.
Okay.
There's a few of them, but none of them is comprehensive and thorough as Tyler Technologies.
Yeah. Sure, I get it.
But they do similar things.
Yeah. We should, you know what?
You would explain to Santa for that one.
No, we need to find one of these nerdy kids at the high school to build you your own.
Oh, yeah.
I say nerdy, that would be my kid that would do that, but.
You're on hold.
I know. He knows. He knows he's a nerd.
Nerds are the best kind of kids.
No, but but I mean, somebody could build something, you know, even. So maybe there's a Mister Peterson's got someone that could.
Yeah.
Intern, I don't know.
Do you hear that church from high school? We need a programmer.
Okay, yeah. That would actually be a kind of a cool project for a class to take on.
It would be.
It would, it would.
You know, build it like build it for you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a good night?
Thank you.
Sure.
So if we look at some of the others really quick, plan. Increase slightly because um. Why? Um, plan. I don't know if plan, I think, oh, half of the cell, half of the cellphone is in the plan budget, so it increased slightly, but not like significant. Uh, are you guys opposed to just making like all of our board members across the board sixty-two fifty a meeting? Cause they're not consistent.
What what's the huge discrepancy between them?
I think some are maybe seventy-five and sixty or but if you're so a board that's making seven fifty a year for their, you know, twelve meetings is about sixty-two is sixty-two fifty. I'm just saying, why don't we just make everybody sixty-two fifty and make it consistent?
We talk, I we had this conversation last year at lunchtime, I remember. And because it would be, we have a difficult enough time filling seats as it is, that when you have smaller boards that only meet two or three times a year, it's not going to be worth it to somebody to sit on that board.
To make seven fifty a year?
No, to if you were to say if you only make two fifty, if you only make sixty-two fifty.
Oh. The people who make seventy-five, is that what you're saying or?
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying it's not consistent.
Like right now you get seven, yeah, and and I agree that it's inconsistent and I agree that, you know, when people are, you know, don't show up for meetings that are supposed to show up for meetings. I I agree on that part. It's just the special boards that don't meet as often, you know, like B Z A.
Like which ones? Well, and so B Z A, I would argue, they make sixty-two fifty and they have to be available. Like if you're on the B Z A, you know, I was the secretary, you know that there may or may not be a meeting, but if there is, you have to have that night open. So they get that pay whether they're there or not. I'm not saying pay them per attendance. I'm just saying per meeting to go consistently sixty-two fifty. So if you have six meetings a year, you get sixty-two fifty for time six. If you have twelve.
I see what you're saying.
Oh, well, then that like, okay.
No, no, but but like.
Across the board.
Yeah, across the board, sixty-two fifty, however meetings, however many meetings you're expected or planned to be at sixty-two fifty times that. And then just be consistent.
And how do we know?
Attendance attendance is not what's.
I mean, I you can do that, but I it's gonna be a I.
Yeah, that's what that that gets.
Because.
There's a there's a plan commission meeting that somebody has done a ton of research work on, whatever, whatever happens, and then they can't make the meeting. They're still on the board. They're still asking.
Yeah, no, and that and I'm not saying to take anything away from someone if they don't come. I'm just saying, let it's not the same for every board, so let's just make it.
The same.
Just make it the same. So then everyone knows that if you serve on a board, sixty-two fifty a meeting, but you get that annual payment, right? So if you have twelve meetings or the expectation is twelve meetings, so I'm just I'm not gonna pick on.
Who's to set those? Who's to set those expectations and who's to say, you know, like the park, so we'll move the B Z A different, like you said, they're on House of Park. Park doesn't always meet in the winter, every single month in the winter, so.
So they still so they still get paid. That's how we've done it. I'm not saying to change anything we've done because sanitation and storm have canceled a lot too and and I don't think you can always help that. All I'm saying is when I looked at, I'm just looking at numbers that were not consistent and I'm just saying most of the boards get seven fifty a year at twelve meetings is sixty-two fifty. I'm just saying for the sake of consistency and using the same board, you know, pay.
Well, then you walk into it, you know what it is. There's no, if I sit on this one, it might be a little bit more. If I sit on this one.
Yeah. Right, right. Yeah.
It's across the board then.
Yeah. I mean, at a later date, if somebody wants to think about attendance and all of that, you can, but at the same time, you said, it's not much to be on a board. And I hope that if someone serves, they want to, and so they're going to come to the meetings, right, if if at all possible, but stuff happens.
Yeah.
And then who keeps track of it and then who like that just that just adds an extra layer of.
I mean, it's not.
Now, if somebody is not showing up at all, then that's one thing.
Sure.
But here and there, we all have lives, we all have emergencies.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I'm just suggesting, you know, consistent across the board. So whatever, however many meetings it is, times sixty-two fifty is what a board person would get paid at the end of the year. I mean, it's pretty, I mean, that's so like that's the I'm looking at the B Z A now and plan and that's basically how it's set for them. And it has been. So using them as a standard. Um, actually. Actually, you know what? B Z A would go up because they must have been the ones making less. Uh, some B Z As.
I thought that I thought it was consistent. I thought that I would that all the boards were seven fifty.
So right now budgeted for this year, three thousand and like, well, maybe like.
I thought we figured.
Nope, B Z A only makes fifty bucks a meeting. Plan makes sixty-two fifty.
And that's the worst.
So I'm suggesting let's just move them all to the sixty-two fifty and make it the same across the board.
And they're basing it off of twelve meetings per year.
Basing it off of how many meetings would be noticed to the papers at the end of the year to say these are the days for meeting. So B Z A is twelve, plan is twelve, um park is twelve.
So yes, we'll notice the paper. That's how we'll know.
Sanitation is twelve, sewer is storm is six. Well, I know you guys have to pay for the police, I think, or you do.
No.
So but you know, I'm just saying.
No, we don't. We quarreled about that last time.
Alright.
We said that discussion was just.
And then one thing, one thing that wasn't on these budgets last year, and I'm not sure why, would be the secretary's cellphone, so I put half on plan and half on B Z A for her phone. I don't know if it was budgeted or not, but she's on the list to receive it. So I added it. And I think that was the only, like, the only increases to those. With those ones. Oh, so Brandon won't be here?
Yeah.
So I but I can talk about it. I met with him Wednesday morning. Um, if we look at Brandon's, so he did budget and I think he talked about it in in his meeting for a fourth person. And he was able to do that with the money that he had because he had twenty thousand in part-time wages. And the salaries are fifty-fifty. So the one thing that I highlighted on his is the health insurance because he went from um thirty thousand this year to forty-eight on his budget and I think that that's gonna be high depending on, you know, a hire. I also told him the same thing that I said to Joe, that when Nick submits the numbers after we've had the public hearing, then the state's gonna send us the notice that says yes or no, or you need to cut. So I said the same thing to him. If we say we're we agree with this, you still have to wait like for the final numbers in November. And I also, you know, just commented that hiring, adding a fourth, you know, wouldn't happen until there's direction from the council again, once the year starts and things are getting paid, what does that look like? So, you know. Yes, that's what he has in here, but at the same time, just planning and that kind of stuff. Um, but I I've gone over it with him as well and um. I don't disagree with it. Like I said, I highlighted the health insurance because I do think it's high. But and and I told him, if it's high and you hire someone, if we have you hire someone and it comes down, that money's gonna be taken out of your budget. It'll it'll get reduced. And he's like, okay, I understand that. It's not just gonna be a wash somewhere else. It'll come back.
You're planning properly.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't work out, will you?
And that's what I told him. I don't wanna take it down because, you know, you have to have it, but um. And I I'm just looking, nothing else. When we were looking at anything, his property insurance number three forty-two, actually based on the projections from um Shepherd, we've been budgeting twenty-five, but his is more in the twenty-three, four and fifty-six range now with their projection. So no, but still, I mean, you've got, there's there's some lines just like everyone's got, you know. Yeah, yeah. And um.
Just a little.
The rest, yeah, I mean, the rest is pretty similar. Um, his budget actually decreased by seventeen percent, but a lot of that is the offset to sanitation. You know? So it it kinda helped out. Um. I also checked, I know that we've always paid at the end of the year ahead for insurance. And I don't disagree with that. But I'm feeling like I'm hearing from some of the departments that they're somewhat like confused or like I kind of feel like we need a bit of a reset. If if there's money in that insurance line, I would want to encumber it at the end for insurance, but I did reach out to Shepherd. And it's due the first of the year, like January first, but we've got a few, you know, just like anyone else, like Nick could could cut the check um within the first week and pay it, right? So I'm just wondering if it's not a good idea this year to get the bill, know what it is, because like I said, it cause it's even confusing me a bit when we talk about the fire. They've only been budgeting twenty-five thousand every year. It's never changed. Their property casualty is anticipated to be thirty-five something. So I.
So where are they? Yeah, how are they moving on?
Well, yeah, so I'm just wondering, I guess Nick as the current treasurer, what do you think? Like, we can encumber it and you can be ready to cut the check right away. Or I guess we get the bill.
When do we typically get the bill?
We would have to come the end of the year because it's due on the first, but you could literally cut it two days in, do you know what I'm saying? And then it comes from this year's budget. I don't know. I just feel like, I don't know.
Yeah, it sounds confusing.
Well, yeah, I get it. I totally understand.
Yeah, no, I I do.
Because.
You're talking about potentially cutting a check on December twenty-eighth.
Well, and I know that we've always, like, we've been able to pay ahead, but I just, I don't know. Like I said, when we looked at Ryan's and I said to him, hey, it's gonna be ten thousand more than you're anticipating, cause I got the numbers from Shepherd. He was like.
And then and he was like, well.
He's like, well, I don't need it. I'm like, no, it's not enough. He's just like, but can I forego that please? I don't think you. So so at the end of the year, when when our departments will come to us to say, I wanna encumber this money, I I mean, I almost kind of feel like that line item, we should maybe just let it come back and then pay the from their insurance from their budget in twenty-twenty-six. I don't know if that makes sense and.
It's a it's a stutter step, right?
Yeah.
So it's if you're if you're consistently paying it one year in advance and then you wait, you just have to figure out what to do with that money now.
Where does it sit?
In or to.
Do you mean the money that's left this year?
Yeah.
I think instead of encumbering anything, you just let it come back into the general. Because now their budgets should have exactly what they need, so now they can reflect exactly what they need.
So then we just absorb it back in and.
And I did ask, I did email Jim and Julie and just said, okay, I realize this and he said, you have, you know, just like anyone else, you have some days to. He said, you have, you know, just like anyone else, you have some days to, but if you have it ready to go, right away.
It's fine.
I don't, but I I'm, I don't wanna make that decision if.
I'm here to, I'm here to help and I'm here to do what you, I tell me to do, so.
I just. I just, so like, might be.
I just need to know, I just need to know a little.
Easier to wrap everyone's heads around it. Although, when you get the bill in December, maybe we all, we look at it then and we figure out. What it is.
And then, cause then we'll know what's left and what we have to.
Yeah, yeah, and I get it. Sometimes people have money left, but it doesn't always have to be encumbered. It can come back and just build the reserves, which we're gonna need.
Yeah, okay.
You know?
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, that's just my thoughts. It's like a little bit of a reset, so people know what's going on, you have accurate, accurate numbers.
Yeah.
Speaking of accurate numbers, so then MVH, I think you sent that number, right, Nick? Like, we're gonna, how much we're gonna get in MVH?
I sent the chart of, Jen and I were kinda talking to Tina today. Of kind of what it looks like.
So, so the levy for MVH is gonna be three fifty, five forty, thirty-two. That's what the levy's gonna be.
That sounds.
How much is in, how much is in the bank right now? Or how much is not encumbered for this year?
You want the appropriations report on that?
I don't know, whatever, it's your job.
Why does everything have to have such complicated names?
I know. Because MVH has typically covered the community crossings grant, right? And, uh, again, I talked with Brandon and I said, um, I would rather budget. All of it, so that if we need it for a project or something, we have it or to match a grant. But just because we budgeted it, doesn't mean we have to spend it, right? And the new gr- the community grass crossing, if we do it this year, and I know that there are some things. If we do it, it doesn't open until October, so we kinda have to think ahead.
Here, Ryan. Hello.
Why do you look so sour?
Let me explain it.
Me too. Me too. I got about, I got about a penny left. Why?
You guys haven't really.
Oh, we're working on, uh, Tony, which specific, do you want to talk about MVH?
We're working on another one of the things. Say what again?
So we've got, uh.
I would, the total.
Not much, not much there, but you know, total for MVH is.
Tell me how much, or do you know the total total? Can you maybe add it?
Nope, just give me one second, I'm monitoring.
Are you, are you off your water diet?
I'm eating once a day now, and I just ate some, right, like, ooh, cause I get the carb shock.
I got pizza next.
No, he just ate. I know, oh.
He just ate.
Oh, I know.
Okay, sub total one hundred two-two-zero-one, MVH, unextended balance, four-three-three, six-two-three, seventy minutes.
So that with the levy, you know, obviously, I don't think we wanna do that much, but. Um, we can overbudget that because we have reserves. Um.
You are making firm, if you wanna call up Tina today, then you are absolutely allowed to get that.
Yes.
Turn money to budget.
Correct, and we don't have to spend it. So if we were to budget, so.
They may, they may call it out.
Sure.
And say your expected revenues are not out to cover the budget, just know this is coming out of your reserves.
And then you. Correct, so this year, we budgeted four sixty-one, nine eighty-three. Do you know what we've spent so far?
Is there any where we have sprinkled in this?
Just to bring it up.
Eighty-six, six forty-one, and the whole.
Maybe I would take everything back. That doesn't sound.
I put them all there so that I don't be.
I would, I would just suggest budgeting for MVH between the money that, the revenue that will come in and the unbalanced five hundred thousand. It's not using all of what's in the bank, but, um. Yeah.
That's five hundred, you know, because we're.
Do a while, five, the five hundred? Yeah.
Where's the pizza from?
Yes. Are you okay?
Okay, that's kinda where I thought it was from. That Kevin already goes out and makes a good pizza.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so. I think that's a hard one, because we don't know if we'll do commu- community crossings, and so, you know, having the match available, I think would be important. That is the only suggestion on that. Which would be under that street repair line. Is like increasing that number. So increasing that one to three forty-seven, two forty-seven. But knowing that we're gonna bring in three fifty and that remaining is gonna come from the reserves. Yeah, and I don't know that we'll, that we'll spend it, but not having to worry about an additional appropriation.
Yeah.
You know, if we needed to move on the project. Um, local road and street, did you get a number from them also?
I did not.
Okay. Um. So.
What you, what she told us was to just bump everything to four percent. Submit, and don't respond back.
So last year's was thirty-two, one forty-nine. Is that right? Our certified budget was thirty-two, one forty-nine.
Your local road and street.
Yeah, and then, um.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then. What do we use that one for? I don't have any notes.
Professional repairs.
Okay.
Is my notes of what the miscellaneous services.
Have we spent any this year? And.
You're joking, I'm like, oh gosh.
Me too.
I don't know.
I don't know, they are just. Yep. Oh, yeah. Listen, I did it earlier. I forgot.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't look like we've spent anything, cause there's nothing in there. And it doesn't look like we've spent anything.
Oh, gosh, it's right there, okay.
So.
This is, uh, so we're talking miscellaneous services, which is three ninety-two.
Okay. And that's the monthly distribution of state fuel tax.
You haven't spent any of that thirty yet.
Okay, and what's the balance in the account? Like, altogether.
And what can you use this for?
I'm not sure, but we haven't spent any in several years.
The, the balance is thirty-two, one forty-nine.
In the whole fund?
Correct.
Like, the bank balance.
Unextended balance is thirty-two, one forty-nine.
Okay, and then, so if you look at the fund report.
Fund report is. I asked a lot of questions.
That's a good thing. Cause I get asked questions all day long, it's my turn.
Whoa, there you go.
You do.
When is lunch?
That's fair.
Teacher.
When is lunch?
It's really like. I'm ready.
One seventy-nine, five eighty-one, sixty-four-six.
Okay, I, we haven't spent it, I'm not sure. I'm gonna see if I can figure out what we would spend it on, and if we need to, we have, you know, a reserve, but I guess.
Okay, so the twenty-one forty-nine is tires and tunes, that's in two twenty-three. That is for large vehicle tires, if you remember, that was my note on that one.
Sure, and I wonder though, like, there's a substantial balance, so what are some things we could use it on? Cause I know Brandon and I have talked about the parking lot at the fire department and the street and the building, and even the town's gonna need it. That can't be part of the grant, however, maybe they made some changes, so.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just noting timestamps on conversations here.
Oh, um, okay, I mean, we can just leave it like that for now. If I find out any more information before we budget, I can let you guys know, I've made a note, um.
And then I can look up what else can, are we allowed to spend that money?
Yeah, yeah. Because I know it is, it's specifically something, so. Ryan's budget is awesome. He did such a good job.
Did you find that ten grand?
He did.
How's that, how's an insurance?
He did a fabulous job.
Good job, Ryan.
No, for real. It's, do you feel good?
Yeah, I mean. I can give you.
He would, he would feel good if he had more money, but in terms of budgeting.
It would be all, no.
Your wife said you were relieved after you met with Tony.
It was a, it was a stress reliever for sure.
Because you're, because you're doing, no, no, I know that, but you're doing the right thing. Thank you, Tony, for everything.
And I'm more pushy than ever.
You're, you're doing the right things. And now you're gonna do even better things, cause you know, what you know.
Think about though, Ryan, last year, how rough it was to do it for the first time. And now you've done it for the second time, and then next year, you're gonna do it again for the third time, it's.
Well, last year, I put that budget together after our five-minute meeting with Chief Arnie. And we went over some stuff, we explained a little bit, and I was still left like clueless, but it was very helpful. But I have a way better idea now, moving forward.
Next year, you're an old hand.
What's that?
Next year, you're an old hand. You'll have it.
But I don't, I mean, I think I'm looking again. Um, I put your telephone line in red like everyone else's because I intended to go back and I did not. I wanna find out specifically what your number is.
And I did that today, unfortunately, it, it was roughly two hundred and forty-three dollars a month.
Okay.
It's my new bill, and.
Oh, yeah, cause we said two thirty-eight seventy was what we were thinking.
Okay, I could have the forty-three and the, and the thirty-four backwards.
Okay, sure.
Could be right, or wrong, so it's around just under three thousand dollars a year for the telephone.
And then you had your Verizon.
Which is about a hundred and fifty a month.
Okay, and then you had your Comcast.
Mm-hmm, which is about fifty-five.
Okay, so one fifty times twelve, so eighteen, and then fifty for Comcast, so six hundred.
Twenty-six.
So. Okay. I mean, for real.
Fifty-four hundred years, so that's six thousand, right?
They watch me do both.
That's six hundred dollar.
Correct, and because we won't really know.
It was my brother.
So I think the phone line is good.
Yeah.
You probably have a little bit more than you need, but with everyone's new service, you know.
And I was also looking into those, uh, the jet packs that fall under telephone. The way you explained, the jet packs on my vehicles go under the telephone bill, correct?
I think so, I said for my, I said the vehicles, yes.
So I was looking into, like, Jeremy upgraded his to five G.
Yeah.
And mine are still on the old four G bandwidth, and I don't know how long that service is gonna stay available, but I do know that the batteries. I've got one with the batteries starting to swell, and I'm not sure if they still offer a four G option if I need to switch it out, and I don't know if it's gonna get more expensive to switch to five G.
So are you saying you wanna add that money?
Are you allowed to?
Wishlist?
No, because I don't have numbers, I don't have.
But I'll add it, so you're saying you wanna upgrade, upgrade your jet packs to five G?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll add it there and you can get a number.
It's something else I wanted to add in my wishlist that I was still waiting for, um, a quota would be updated on the flashlights on the engines. And my number is dropped.
Updating flashlights on the engines?
Yeah.
Is that?
Ten new flashlights.
Oh, yeah, we, did we talk about that?
We did briefly, but it was.
Yeah. Approximately how much?
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah. I got flashlights.
These are the big orange ones that the firemen wear on scraps for going to the fire, the new ones.
They're fancy.
They're not, it's, the problem is the ones we carry now, um, have halogen bulbs. And they really put a drain on the battery quick, so you get about an hour of life out of them on a fire ground. Where the new LED ones will go fifteen hours without a single fire.
And honestly, at a twenty-five hundred dollar expense, if you have money in your budget at the end of the year, you should probably encumber that, like, looking at it, right?
Absolutely.
So however, we were just talking about insurance, and I was saying, I'd really like to just pay it the year it's due, so we all know what's going on. Now, here's the tricky thing with Ryan's. We did not budget it that way because he knew that he was gonna have about seventy-eight hundred in that line.
Seven thousand one hundred.
Right, the money to match what we budgeted of twenty-eight. So with that said, since it's on the record, he would need to encumber to make the difference for his this year, do you know what I'm saying? The same. Brandon would not, cause his is, and the building would not. I'm not sure about Jerry right now, but we know that. But trying to get more on, uh, it comes out exactly when it's budgeted, if possible. Nick's gonna try to make that happen, so.
I had Maddie contact Anton, which, um, is the consultant for Shepherd Insurance to see if there's any more. Payments going to be issued or due this year, they said no. So that seven thousand is.
Yeah, so don't, don't count on doing anything with that but moving it over to make up the difference of your twenty-eight, yeah.
So the way it was explained to me last year was, even if the whole line item in insurance was left over last year, we can never touch the insurance line, that's always a rollover line.
And that's what we were talking about, and I, I, my opinion was, we really kinda need a reset, cause like, we discovered your line was never budgeted for what it, what it actually is. And so trying to just get that, what it is, and paying it right away at the first of the year, and then it comes right out of your budget. Gone, and you know it's gone.
Yeah, you have to.
You know, so.
You don't have to keep saying.
I know it's there, but it's already spent.
That's right. Like, I totally understand the pain ahead, I just wonder if over the past few years, it's, I don't know, if, I don't know.
So, and I got really confused when I did some research in history on that line item itself. At one point, uh, three years ago, there was sixty-six thousand dollars in there. That was encumbered, and then. Two years were paid out of it without an additional addition from general fund. I didn't understand.
I don't know either, and that's why I asked Nick if he can just kinda restart and, you know. So then when you budget next year, you'll have to put in exactly what you need, you know?
We can.
Yeah, if we can. Um, and then I, if you guys remember, Ryan thought when he budgeted last year, the increases to those lines, that it would translate to. The salary, like a salary increase, but it didn't, so those are still the same, but we would need to make sure that we include that in the, um. Salary limits at the end of the year. The INCORP gave us their contract, which I forwarded to Clay. Uh, because I think it says it has to be adopted in December, and they, they did increase the contract from sixty-two, seven fifty to sixty-six.
Which was roughly a hundred dollars per firefighter.
Yeah, did you still, the max is still thirty-eight? Cause we, we talked about that and I wrote this in my notes.
I still haven't seen that anywhere.
Okay, okay. So Ryan and I kinda also talked about what is the max that, you know, in, I mean, he mentioned he's lucky, and I agree, that we have a lot of. Volunteers that wanna be here at our station, um, but there was still the question like, okay, what is our cap? So, I don't know if that's their contract.
Has there ever been?
There is, yes, yes.
There is a max number, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, but I think we need to know so we can budget well.
Twenty-six percent.
Because like, I'm right.
And does that cap come from the INCORP's contract, or is that cap, where does that?
And it would have to be a standpoint from both. The INCORP contract is, is set in a specific way that these guys are getting reimbursed for fuel, uh, clothing allowance. If they need a percentage, if they need their training quota, but then also, we have an issue here that I need to be able to budget for physicals.
Right.
And I need to know a specific number.
Yeah.
So I can make that happen, but, but.
I used to tell you something, you decided as a chief, if you decide what that number is, or if it's something that's like.
Uh, I mean, I feel like you could, because it's your budget that you're working with, or even, and I don't wanna say us, but, right, is the, is your number. Or even, and I don't wanna say us, but, right, as the, as your number increases, or you hit the max, all of your costs increase. So being that we, we help budget, it might have to be both. I would first see if there's an actual number.
So I honestly think, um, thirty-five would be a solid number to stick to. The problem is if I have thirty guys on, and two of them aren't really making their percentage, and two new people show up and they wanna join the fire department, they're really, really go-getters. Do I say, hey, you two that aren't making your numbers, you're gone? Or do I say, hey, I'll take thirty-seven?
I don't, if you're trying to.
Are there any others about, I mean, obviously they're signed up.
Is there like a training period, like?
They have, they have a probationary period. We do have a probationary period, and usually, you know, within, it's a six-month period. And everybody typically does good, but after those six months, you know, everything changes for these guys, and I'm not trying to make any excuses for anybody, but I'll have a guy right now that's single, and within one year, he's married and is a pregnant fiance or wife. And now his whole life is changing. But he still wants to be a member, he still wants to try his best, he still is gonna make calls that he can. But where he falls short is that making those training nights or duty nights that we have established.
I think you have to set a number, and then you need to let everyone know that. And if you have someone new, like, they should all know that if you can't meet and, or a certain expectation, and someone comes in, they could take your spot.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, it's just.
I agree. Um, I could also hire new, um, personnel that aren't guaranteed a paid spot yet. Because the number, if I do go over that max number, hey, you could come in, but the only thing I could do is a physical, but I can't give you any guaranteed.
Yeah, because what were we talking about, that after someone is there for five years, you, we pay for their full uniform?
We buy a class, pay a uniform.
Right, and that's how much again?
Roughly a thousand to twelve hundred.
Right, so depending, at five years, right, you would have that. So just thinking of all the costs that are involved, we talked about that.
Well, and who would set the standards for if you don't complete so many? Is that the INCORP, or would that be you?
The INCORP tracks and monitors, um, percentages. Um, the Fire Department Secretary also tracks and monitors as a secondary to make sure the numbers are correct.
Okay.
So I know if people aren't making percentages, I know, right now, we have a tier-two program that is not working very well, except for just a few members. And I just had a conversation with one and removed him from our roster, because they were unable to do their part.
Well, and ultimately, whatever his budget is set at, or a contract's approved at, is also gonna dictate what you all have the ability to do. Right, so it's, everyone lives together.
And I can show you a set figure, a number, a reimbursement figure, but it all changes based on who made what percentage, trainings, duty nights, and special events. And we break up special events, like the five K, or a Fourth of July parade. Those are special events, and the more these guys do, the more they get it. So it's, it's, it all changes. It's never a set dedicated number for sure until the end of the year. Tell your kids tally it.
Yeah.
But I'm very lucky and very fortunate, we have a roster of thirty right now, which is just almost unheard of anymore.
So I was, if I could, just one question. Can you elaborate a little bit on the size of the roster? And how difficult it is, I know, to find volunteer firefighters. You're so fortunate to have, you know, the, the leadership, and it's, it is, the fire department to me is very, you know, personality-based. It's, you know, they, they love Chief Popper, they love Chief Arnie, they love Chief the Wacky, that's why they're here, that's why they're doing what they're doing. Do we wanna be in the position of, of turning people away?
I, I would absolutely, so when I came to Bernsar, it was eighteen years ago. I remember I had to put in an application, I had to sit in front of a hiring board, because there was a position available. Not because, oh, come on in, uh, we'll take you, we'll get you some gear tonight, give me a copy of your certifications, here's our airbags and our trucks and our equipment, you're good to go, here's a pager, start responding when you can. It's not like that. Back then, it was hard, it was hard to find a volunteer position, because there was guys loading up every firehouse around here. And I kinda, you know, I tried to find excuses on why it's not like that anymore, and I would say, because, you know, younger kids coming out of high school have really good enter, home entertainment. Parents' basements, Xbox, Playstation, they don't have to go anywhere. They don't have to do anything. And parents now don't even, like, I was out at eighteen, my mom said, oh, happy birthday. Out. You see thirty-year-olds living at home still.
Oh, no.
I think all of them are here removed now.
And we are, we are very lucky, and I do think that we have a great station, great equipment. I think that our chief, assistant chief, secretary, right, you, they've built a great culture, and people want to be there, and that's awesome. And like he was saying, there's always still the challenge of someone can't meet, you know, and the budget challenge. So I think it's just all around. But I do think setting a number and letting, and making it like known, right? Uh, like I said, we wrote down thirty-eight when we were talking, but if the number's thirty-five, or I would, I, if it's not in the INCORP contract this year, we should set it, so that it's very clear to everyone and anyone, right? And then you might get to the place where if someone leaves, or that now it's like, okay, yeah, you're gonna sit in front of the board, and we're gonna hire you, or whatever, I don't know.
And it's, it's really, it hasn't been an issue. We haven't had that problem in a long time, and it's a really good problem to have. But absolutely, I, I really have to figure out a number.
Yeah.
And, and I didn't know if there was a set, I cannot remember if there's a set number anywhere right now.
I feel like, like when I've talked to Bill in the past, for some reason, thirty-two sticks in my head. But then we talked and said something like thirty-eight, but I don't think it's in the contract. It might be in an old contract, maybe somewhere the number got dropped out. I don't know, we could look on the shared drive probably, but.
With all that you said, I think, being an ex-fireman and going through this process with you, and the years that I served, I think if we can, I would set a higher number than a lower number, if it's in the budget, if we've got the money for it.
It's not, it's not, it's not. I mean, his is already tight, what he's got is.
Well, that's what I'm saying, oh, it, the thirty-five, I mean, that's what we were talking about, right, or no?
Well, I'm not, I don't know, we don't know. And I'm not sure, looking at the INCORP, how it's, like, I don't think we have enough information to know, um, what they think is a, a number that they can run on. I'm just, I feel like we should get to a number.
Absolutely.
So that we can plan the budget and all that.
Right now, let's pretend every member of that fire department made their percentages or trainings and their duty nights. That means a hundred percent of the town contract with the INCORP, if you guys approve the sixty-six thousand they're asking for with a hundred dollar increase, that puts each fireman at an eighteen-hundred-and-eighty-five dollar payment for the year, which is below what's already set in the contract for him, if they need to.
Right.
So.
So there's, so there's not enough in the contract?
There's already not enough in the contract.
There's already not enough at that number, right?
That's a, that's thirty-five. The thirty I'm at now, twenty-two hundred, if, it never happens.
But still, you have to plan for the.
What if, if, it could, it really could have.
And what does the contract say? Is the, like, a minimum if they meet it all? If you meet all your duties?
Each position is broken down.
Oh, okay.
Um, EMT certifications, ha, you know, there's different, different, um, outgoing numbers for everything.
Yeah, but that's, again, though, that's what, when you're looking at a number and what the contract is, you kinda have to build it around that. And you can play the game, like, not everyone's gonna get all of their money, but what if they did? You wouldn't have the money to give it to them. And that's not good either, we gotta be able to, if we're out there saying you're gonna get this, we need to make sure.
You mentioned both, um, you know, being, having a lot of volunteers, which is good. And then you also mentioned the younger generation not necessarily coming out for it. Are you, like, what are you doing to engage that younger, you know what I mean? It's like, you're putting this cap on at like, you know, thirty people, and you got that cap on at thirty.
And then you have all these eight, you know, like, four, eighteen-year-olds that wanna come, like.
So it, it, it's actually funny that you bring it up, because while we don't have a cadet program, we don't have anything that would protect, um, these, um, younger generate, the younger kids right now, like, still in high school, from participating and actively training with us. What I do have is a waiver program, where a parent can sign a waiver form, and then it allows these people to like ride with us. Now, this has been in place since I've, forever. I don't know, we've, I could probably follow up and make sure everything's still good, and make sure it plays, says, hey, it's still good. But I had two firefighter cadets from the high school, um, trade program, that go through, and they get certified through the MAC and Valparaiso. Um, two kids from Chesterston High School that came to the fire station yesterday, and I took them with us to Valvo, where we, you know, our engineers did training, we had advanced clothesline training. These guys got to actively watch, while not participating, but seeing what we're doing, and showing them a lot of interest. One of them, his father was a member of our fire department, he instantly wants to be a member of ours when he's certified and can. And that's a step in the right direction, because we have to constantly recruit. And we have to constantly show the public what, what we have to offer versus others.
And what does it take to have, like, to have that cadet program? And, you know, so talking about it in the budget, cause obviously they would be costly, but is that something that there's more grants and going back to, you know, on our last time, sponsorship from other things that will help, you know, education, whatever, you know, to help these kids to be able to have that cadet program, to be able to try to bring more money in for your budget, to be able to, you know, have that number, to be able to bring in those younger kids?
So you said the MAC, but all of the career centers in the region have fire service. So a lot of the kids in high school can go through that program there, and then they probably potentially come to you.
The program is so awesome, because it, it certifies them, so the second they come out of school, they're ready to go.
So they do have the option in high school to go follow that route as well?
Yeah, and that's what it is.
With them being, I, I just worry about putting that cap on and not, you know, getting stuck on a number, not being able to.
But it, it, I, I hear what you're saying, but much.
And I know, and I'm asking, how do you, how do you cycle through, how do you cycle through those people? Are you, you know, and, and I know that it's a what-if, and it's probably not something that happened, but, you know, you have the same thirty guys for five years, like, you got all these other people knocking on your door, when you're putting that cap on it, and since, just because we're talking about that, just thinking about all those other things, you know, putting in place.
Well, could there be like a waitlist, like?
Yeah, absolutely. The problem with that is that.
Okay, if I get some of the quits.
If, if I have an eighteen-year-old guy that's certified knocking at our door, and I can't bring him on, roughly for him, there's a neighboring department he can go to right now and help, both agree him with open arms.
Sure, right. And that, and we're fortunate, yeah, and that's fortunate, because when it comes to, I totally hear what you're saying, and I think we have to reach the young people, but you, we also have that challenge of budget.
Yeah.
And you don't wanna bring them on, and then all of a sudden be like, well, yeah, I said you'd get this kind of a stipend, and they do all their duty hours, it's like.
Sorry, I can't do that.
Sorry, I can't do that.
Too many of you guys.
Yeah.
Okay, I did go through the contracts that's over there, it's not, it's not anywhere in there, and I went back.
I feel like Bill must have had a number.
Every couple of years back to twenty-ten.
Yeah, and I, and I feel like he's even said it before, but I cannot recite it.
I've been making that, yeah.
Is there age restrictions, like?
So there isn't, and, except for eight, eighteen-years-old. You know, that, like I said, there's two sixteen-year-olds coming on Wednesdays and observing what we're doing, but they're not participating. So it's not extremely beneficial, except for it's giving them a great idea of how the firehouse actually works and, and the environment, and they're falling in love. Um, and by doing that, I'm kinda securing possibly two future firefighters for our community. And it's, it's, it's kinda tricky. So the high school program is probably one of the best we could even ask for, because, let's say, Nick, you wanted, you're like, hey, Ryan, you know what? I wanna help out, I wanna join the fire department. The requirements and certification is almost impossible for a grown, working man or woman to pull off in adulthood. Because the fire academy alone is, you gotta go two, three days a week to that MAC and earn Valparaiso. And we have haul equipment from here to there, bring your bags, fill it up, all in within the same day, and then you're supposed to go to bed, go to work the next day, and then pull that off after work the following day. It's really tough. Now, we can do a lot of training in-house, and we can put on our own firefighter one-two courses, it's just a lot of time. It's very difficult to end the state, the state mandates on these, uh, certification requirements, and we get tougher and tougher. But I do actively have one, one of the firefighters that are, is doing research in cadet programs from other municipalities, to see what type, type of legalized verbiage they have on paper to make it, and, or how do they ensure all of those questions we're trying to find right now? Because I'd love to be able to issue those to kids and hear, say, hey, you're gonna climb ladders today, or you're gonna learn how to roll those, let's go.
On your wish list, I think the conversion of the die vehicle will be on September, right? I, I think I added when we were talking, wrapping of that, and your five bunker gear that you get yearly. And then would, um, the replacement of the cascade breathing air system priority?
Number one.
Number one?
Well.
And the, I mean, obviously the bunker gear, I think the council has committed, you know, on a recurring thing. And even the wrap, depending on what your, what, what comes of the September meeting and your budget this year, you know, you never know. I don't know how it ends up at the end of the year, but.
I did bring another, uh, copy of the Blue Fire quote for the cascade system, I'm not sure if you asked, how you'd ask for it.
Yeah.
But it should, I had, other than the gas cylinders, it has the, um, actual compartment that you store the cylinders in while we're filling to keep them, uh, from, if they explode, they're protected, and that's, that's one of the indicators that I talked about briefly.
Yeah, you, you have to, so. I think you did a good job in your budget. I think you and Ariel are gonna do an even better job next year. I think, you know, watching your stuff and knowing where it's coming from, that'll help you categorizing and, you know, putting them in certain lines, so.
And thank you for all your, Michelle, thank you for all your help.
I might've dropped your name and said, call Michelle.
She's like the photo friend.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I don't know if I said it to you when we were talking, but I, like, said it to everyone, you know, once Nick puts in the numbers, and we have our public hearing, and we adopt our budget, it goes to the state, then the state will come back and say, yes, or you gotta cut it. So once he responds to that in November, so this is what we'll turn in. I'm guessing, did anyone have a change?
I didn't have.
We'll submit what you have come up with, but November, you'll know for sure what you have to work with. So if they come back and say, hmm, you guys can't have that much, we might have to do something. Do you have any else?
I do not. Thank you very much.
You do?
That's fine.
Take this.
Um, actually, I do have one question. The, uh, I have five POs in there on the table. We're waiting for signatures, but we had to verify that the funding was there.
Tonight, right?
In order to, in order to verify the funding there, we had, I had them funding between lines, I didn't know if that happened really.
I had to have to start a meeting.
So then did you sign the POs to say that money is available, cause you do need to do that?
They are out.
Okay, so if you sign his POs, then we can official stuff.
And then we can official, and after tonight, you're good to go.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Take good luck.
You too.
Really, Tony, I need to go make the transfers before I can sign and say.
Yeah, no, that's fine, but, but that's what I need though, once, so I would have signed a PO, you didn't have a PO. Because I, it's telling me you've never verified them, like, or didn't have an opportunity to do it.
My page for September.
They literally said about, we didn't change.
Oh my gosh.
Thank you!
I did, I did slice it.
Where'd you get it from? Yeah, those boxes say nothing on them, so I was like, it's a surprise, just eat it. Don't ask, don't ask questions.
And, alright. I don't have anything like highlighted red, so that's all. I don't have anything like highlighted red, so that's all.
Good, so I, I might have missed, so you said, hey, if you made any changes after the preliminary, send it to me.
Okay.
I thought it was discussed for the insurance line.
Okay. Okay.
Um.
So three, four, two?
Yeah.
Okay.
So on there right now, it's thirty-one to forty-one.
Yeah.
And with the new vehicle, it would increase costs, so we had projected, or Jeremy had came up with thirty-four, three oh eight.
So how, where did you get your projection? So was it, so the property casualty estimate that the shepherd gave us, it didn't include the new car?
Like eight, two, like we get one in twenty-six, so there's not included.
So in addition?
No, it would, it would be a replacement vehicle, but every year, even with, with Jane, it would be, oh, well, your insurance is more because of that change in vehicle.
You're saying.
Or a vehicle to a newer vehicle.
But you think it's.
Yeah, absolutely, because a replacement, like to mature a twenty-twenty-six vehicle as opposed to a twenty-nineteen.
Oh, yeah.
There is a difference in coverage. Originally, we had projected, it was like thirty-eight thousand, and you wanted to cut it to thirty-one.
Cause that's what they told me.
We were at thirty-four.
Right.
Like, and if I'm three grand short, my budget's stretched.
I guess I didn't know about. Okay, so I guess I didn't know about the vehicle. So is that something that you guys have said every year, a vehicle? Cause I don't have it on the wishlist.
It's been on my wishlist every year.
Oh, I see, it's a vehicle with no money, though. So what's the estimated cost? I have vehicle, but no estimated cost.
So, on the wishlist, the patrol vehicles are estimated, cause it's over a three-year period. Um, this past year was forty-nine-seven, my guess is we're probably fifty-two, but that's, now, keep in mind, that's without upfitting and with taking.
So, what's upfitting?
Well, it's equipment that'd be necessary.
I, I know what it is, I mean, how much?
Uh, five to six thousand dollars is usually what it costs me.
So sixty thousand is what you need.
So sixty is around amount.
Yeah, if, but the only caveat to that is, if we were to move on this upcoming year and we move on from our gray pickup truck. Like, that should have a ten, like, a ten to fifteen thousand dollar trade-in value if we were to trade that in. That's not gonna be.
Which would come off the top of.
Correct, if we traded it in, absolutely.
That wouldn't be, obviously, we're selling it in one of our sales, you would trade that in.
I, I wouldn't in that predicament, I, like, when we were doing the explorers, it's because they were gonna give us three grand on a trade-in.
Do you know how much they would give you on a trade-in on that truck?
It's, like, it's, so for me to go to them right now, not knowing that we're even gonna commit.
Is it a Ford?
It is a Ford.
What else needs a truck?
Does he not want a Ford?
It's.
He does, no. He would only drive a Ford.
It's just one of those things where we could make more outright, but when you get to a sort of dollar value. I mean, I don't want to be in an ambulance situation either, but again, if you guys think that, I mean, ultimately, it's your decision. I mean, if you wanted to spend sixty and then you wanted to close a bit of auction and get rid of it, that's fine too.
So.
Um, cause I would assume that vehicle probably got purchased from CCD, but.
I mean, I would like to see, and obviously not right now, because you don't know what's going to happen, what they would say they would give you for it. And then we could see what technically fair market value is, because obviously, you know.
And, and that's what we, that's what we did last time, um, at the time of ordering, we had them go ahead and appraise and see what they would give us for the twenty-fifteen Explorer, and they came back like three grand, I mean.
And at that point, that is so low that, yeah, selling it.
Yeah, but the truck's clearly gonna have a lot more value than that.
Okay. So that, is that, that your intention is to potentially trade that in and get that car?
That would be, that, that, abso- absolutely, and I think that would go a long way in reducing the cost of this vehicle, I mean, if we're ten, fifteen off of our CSD.
And the, but, no body armor this year, you said?
Not till now, as long as we don't have to replace somebody, we're good.
And the computer you have listed there, would that be one of those that is gonna have to get replaced because of the Windows eleven? Or is this like a laptop in a car?
I don't know what you're talking about, I don't have a computer.
I have, I have computer on the wishlist.
I think you're looking at a.
It's a yearly, are we rotating out, are we rotating out of the computer for you?
Well, it says yearly, it says yearly.
Well, okay, so it's, so if, if we're talking about the yearly purchase, that's, that's a laptop, that has nothing to do with my desktop's on station.
Okay, that's, I just.
But then, the laptop is for a cruiser, correct? That's not.
Those are for the cars.
I, I have, no, I, I, I wanna, I, I don't, I don't wanna be rude, but you guys are both talking at the same time, I have no idea what other anyone thinks.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
The laptop is for a cruiser, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we replace one every year?
One every year, so we have eight patrol vehicles, so I mean, that potentially puts us at having in service an eight-year-old laptop at some point in time, um, as we cycle through these. So doing one, we've been able to stretch that, but that's still an eight-year-old laptop, so.
And you don't need tasers this year?
I mean.
I have it on there, I'm just asking, so we don't plan.
We, we talk, we, we talked about, I know when you and I briefly talked about it, it was the point of, at some point in time. We need to get away from the old way of doing things, which was every six to eight years coming to you and saying, hey, forty grand. Um, so, yes, it'd be nice to purchase one, is it a necessity, like?
So would you like wanna buy one every year until you rotate?
That's, that, I think that would be a great map that you had.
What does one cost?
Do they, and do they, do they expire, or do they?
I'm gonna have to get a quote for you. I don't wanna guess, cause.
Is there a life cycle to them?
Yes. There's also an end of life cycle where they no longer support them, they no longer produce batteries, that's what we ran into last time, which was, here you go, you got six-ish tasers that we're no longer gonna make batteries for, so you guys can't do anything with them. It's a college textbook racket.
Will you get a number, though, because we, it'd be nice to get it on this, like, revolving list?
I absolutely will.
So, okay, so you increased your insurance line to what number did you, cause I don't see it on this as a change.
So it's thirty-four, three oh eight.
Thirty-four, three oh eight, okay. Which one of your funds, so lo, the, okay, which one gets money, local law is your ticket, right? It's money, okay, so local law is funded.
Yes.
Lo- local law is every dollar that we bring in, so reports, everything.
Yes, okay. But then the OPO grant and the DUI grant, those are reimbursements, if you use it.
Yes, and it looks like that's, that funding, it's not confirmed yet, but my understanding is that Hebron didn't wanna take care of it anymore. No other municipality picked that up, I don't know that there will be funding in that next year at all.
But we should probably put some there just in case.
Correct, because what would happen, though, is if, let's say that Vermont Harbor, maybe we potentially even apply for on our own. Well, if we did get awarded it, so even if we don't have anything for the twenty-twenty-six budget year. The budget for twenty-seven will actually start October first. So we could, in the twenty-six year, be spending from that twenty-seven budget bid. So having the money in there, it doesn't hurt anything.
Right.
Cause it's not our dollars anyways.
It, yeah, it's not ours anyway, we're just planning to spend it if we.
So, um, unless we're, yeah.
Uh-huh. And that's the OPO?
And the DUI.
So.
They're both gonna maybe go away?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. But you don't plan on any of that supporting anything, it's just extra if you get it.
Correct.
Okay.
That DUI task force, that, that hasn't been used in a couple of years. They've already announced an award period from October first, twenty-five through September thirtieth and twenty-six. Right.
Um, what are our funds, well, this isn't the place, sorry, I was looking at opioid, I was just thinking, cause we spent that, which here?
What?
Where's your PO?
Signed, stamped, ready to go.
So, just for my clarification, am I to hold off on that until the, the additional appropriation gets approved by DLGF, is that what, okay?
Yeah, thank you for reminding me. Yeah, you'll, can you do those tomorrow, request the additional appropriations? Yeah, cause they literally approved it the following day, right, the last time, so.
So we'll just upload the signed resolution?
Which you should have, cause we signed it.
We all signed it there, right?
I mean, I, I don't have any other questions, really, I know, um, the note at the top of Jeremy's is, you know, five full-time officers. And so some of that funds from the sixth were moved around and some of the excess from the budget reduction to, um, building was moved in to cover. So, I don't have any other questions.
Uh, I just have one thing out, we can find out tomorrow during our meeting with Susan, but longevity, cell phone allowance and uniform allowance, he has to have an additional line. Because when I run the perf reports, it throws it off.
This is separate, yeah.
Because the police is now a set salary amount, so when I run those reports, it's adding cell phone and so on and so forth to their salary amount, it should.
Is that something you can just add a line, or you have to ask her about it?
I need to ask her, either that or I'll ask Tina when we have our meeting on the third, if it needs to be, like, turned in with our budget.
Okay. Right, as in, yeah.
It's just, because there's, when I was on the phone with the lady on Keystone, she was walking through it, and there's a way to do it, but she said it's better to have it appropriated, then I can put my own numbers in it.
Yeah.
But it would just be like, how are six, one sixteen point one, it would just add a point one to all of those.
I've, I'll say, I'll say the same, you might have heard me say to Ryan, that I've said to everyone tonight, right? I, I don't have a problem with your budget, once Nick puts it in and we public here and adopt it, then we, the state's gonna say yes or no. If it comes back and they're significantly less, we may have to make some changes, but I don't have a problem with it. Which the, that's November-ish when we would know exactly, we could send you, this is exactly the numbers.
Right. I mean, I, going there, I would add is, I, deep down, it's unfortunate that we're in a situation where the police department is scaling back and going from six full-time officers to five. Um, but at the same time, I can tell you that if we tried to operate continually like on the salaries we're currently on, you're just not gonna retain anybody. Um, and that's kind of what we've been fighting since day one, since I took over, and it's, like, some guys have held on and things like that, but, I mean, there's a couple neighboring agencies that are running through this right now, because they can't, they're, flat out, I'd be surprised if they fill their positions. There's not enough people that wanna do this job right now, so, that are qualified to do it.
Have you got anything?
Just one side note, have you had a chance to do anything with that drone?
No, ab- absolutely, I know you've been busy.
I know you've been busy.
Um, honestly, my, the entire year has all been devoted to field training and just being able to stay afloat.
Well, I, I just thought I had.
Um, hopefully, we can get something rolling with it soon, but literally, we're barely covering the road.
Just one day, that's all.
So, that's, that's been the focus, um, a side note, because while I oversee him, I wanna make sure nobody gets overlooked. Um, I don't know if anyone's discussing anything about a potential raise or whatever you guys are gonna do for Vermin, I'd just like to keep that in your guys' minds, cause that doesn't come from my budget. So if you guys don't discuss it and don't figure anything out, then I, I mean, from my department's point of view, the guy's reliable, he doesn't milk anything. He comes in here and twice a week cleans this place and, and it just, it just looks really good. Yeah, cause I, uh, I won't be the one volunteering to do that for two years again, so.
You don't wanna go to toilet seat again and, uh.
But you did a great job.
No.
Anybody got anything? Thank you. Nick, do you have the, um, balances in the opioid unrestricted and restricted funds?
They're not gonna be accurate.
Oh, they're not, they're right.
You got another distortion?
Okay, so before any budget stuff's done, then let's, because the predicament we were in right now is we never appropriated.
Right.
So, we need to know the correct dollar amounts.
Let's, we'll, we'll figure those out tomorrow, Tony, I'll let you know it to you.
Um, yeah, so.
Well, for budgeting, it's to July, or June thirtieth, right? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm just asking for a number so we can budget, like, in the opioid unrestricted, like, how much is in there and how much are we expecting?
Year-to-date today or June, June thirtieth?
If, either, it doesn't.
Well, June thirtieth, thirtieth, we're good, but there's been another.
Oh, okay.
And that hasn't been received yet, cause I think it was like the beginning of August-ish.
So June thirtieth is eighteen to sixty-one.
Is what's?
Unrestricted balance.
Okay, and do we know how much we're gonna get over the course of the next year?
I can send you the spreadsheet, because it combines it out to like twenty-thirty-one, twenty-thirty-five.
Yeah, we have it for the next couple of years.
Okay, so we just need to put those numbers in, so we can have that budgeted, so if we wanna spend it like we did this year, we don't have to worry about it.
Jeremy has a plan for the money.
I think it's now, okay, I'll, Jeremy sends a, Tony, what, Jeremy sent you the spreadsheet?
Okay. Okay, good.
Um, the only thing I would say is after a conversation with Flock, um, this thirteen thousand, three hundred, the initial payment's gonna be seven thousand, three hundred. That annual recurring fee of that other six thousand won't be billed to us until next year.
Okay.
So, I don't know, potentially then, do you wanna make sure that we budget that six thousand, because we're not gonna spend this whole fifteen-three. We're only gonna spend seventy-three hundred, or if, or if we wanna encumber that other six thousand.
Or we encum- we encumber what's left of that, yeah. That probably would make sense, cause the PO's that much money.
Okay.
Encumber the rest.
Okay.
For at least next year.
Cause she didn't tell us that upfront, she said, oh yeah, and you need thirteen-three, we're like, alright, yeah.
But, that's the unrestricted?
Correct.
Okay, so then, so we need to put in the unrestricted budget for where services? Uh, am I doing other services? Or professional services? Six thousand, you said, is gonna be the annual?
Correct.
Okay, so at least we know six thousand for the annual fee needs to be budgeted in the unrestricted.
Correct.
Okay. And then we can lease.
And then the restricted is the one that, like, the other agencies or municipalities have put together committees and they reached out to schools.
And we should budget something, so we can start doing something with that, too.
Yeah.
Right.
Like Jerry and I discussed doing, like, uh, school nurses receiving extra training and learning how to administer an ARCAM.
Mm-hmm.
One million percent.
So, there's twen- so there's twenty thousand budgeted for that right now, and then if we, I put ten dolla- ten dollars, ten.
You get ten dollars.
Ten thousand for the unrestricted, that should cover the annual fee and hopefully in the other one, something that we can do with it. And then just knowing, I guess, what the balances are would be helpful, but I don't think we're overdoing anything by doing that.
Does it?
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, we did BCA plan, uh, I don't know what you've got for, uh, RDC.
I don't have anything. I, I don't have anything, I have, I do have a meeting, um, set up on Tuesday with Baker Chili, um, um, to talk about numbers. I know we had talked on the phone previously about it, so unfortunately, I don't have anything really to look at or talk about until after Tuesday.
Yeah. Jen and I looked at the wastewater, which isn't, I mean, it's based on utilities, so we just made sure that everyone's salaries that were halved got put in there. The only thing I highlighted and read was to check and see how much our wastewater treatment bills were every month, to make sure that sixty thousand was enough. But we budget this, but aren't necessarily obligated to budget it.
Okay.
So I'll see, I should probably look it up, cause we've got the bill. I wanna say it's about five thousand, so that'd be right, sixty thousand is probably, yeah, it's a little bit less than five thousand, so I think that one's okay. Trash, same, I think, um, like, year-to-date, what we've paid is, um, if we budget one, one ninety-five. Although, I don't know about the increase, like, and I don't know how many houses there are. And I don't know how many houses they're billing us for, so.
Yeah, that was set, yeah.
We can ask.
It's a set amount, isn't it?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Nick what he thinks.
Yeah.
Because remember, remember we had the issue with the trailer that wasn't there, but there was garbage stand there and, yeah.
It is. What else was there? Oh, CCD, so I think that we are gonna get, so we, it's a, we have a four cent tax rate for CCD. And immediately in January, we can raise it to five cents, but we have to do it right away and it needs to be adopted by May for the next year.
Do it.
You'd think a penny isn't a lot, but a penny is a lot. So immediately on my calendar for January is to get that new ordinance done so we can adopt it and that in our next budget, we can get the money.
Could've known a lot of things a year ago.
I know, so but it looks like we will in taxes for twenty twenty-six for CCD, we will get two thirty-four, four seventy-five. And and we've always over budgeted and we have a substantial fund balance, but like this year, we budgeted two sixty and honestly, I don't think we're gonna spend it all. Or we could spend ahead, right, for some things now, so I mean, if you guys are good with two sixty, like I don't.
Yeah.
I think that.
You know, the here's.
No. I'd rather have more than enough for them.
Well, but here's the thing also, so if my numbers are right, I think Nick might even, we have like a half a million dollars in the fund balance and we'll bring in two thirty-four, four seventy-five. But going forward, depending on what's gonna be happening, it's not a bad thing to have reserves.
Right.
To be able to do, you know.
Right. Yeah, I think.
So and and we've always budgeted about two sixty and it seems like, and there's years where I think money goes, money goes back to the bank, so.
You're fine.
I think if we do that, it's probably, you know, it's safe.
You're gonna, you're gonna like stole yourself, so.
No, you're fine, no.
I should know, if you wanted to be, we're, if you wanted to see the numbers that she was showing.
I'm gonna just ask.
It's on there.
I'm gonna.
We're gonna talk about the computers.
Oh, yeah, what computers? Oh, yours for you guys?
Yeah.
But we also.
We also need to talk about the fifty-two million computers.
I'm the reason I. Well, it's not fifty-two million, but w- uh that's why I was asking them all these fund balances, because we have a lot in equipment, but at our September meeting, there are eleven computers in town that need to be replaced.
Right, right, yeah.
Because they're not upgradable to Windows eleven, and while that's probably like, mm, okay, if they are connected to the internet, they will no longer get security updates with Windows ten, so they have to be.
What do all eleven, what are we using all eleven computers for?
So there's like four in the police department, Nick's needs to be replaced, there's four in the uh fire department and one in the street.
Did Rainstorm give you a quote, yes?
Yes, yeah, so it's about, um, I think it's about a thousand per computer and then setup and all of that. So it would be, I'm saying about twelve thousand, but like we can figure that out in September, I told him we would talk in September and come back and he's, he could have them up and running before October.
Does he wanna lump the other computers into that too and just give us a deal?
I mean, I'm gonna ask him, but but if, but maybe purchasing them all at once.
I know you won't, but yes. Because if, if you are saying you do not want one, you are saying you do not want one.
No.
I'm trying to choose what I have.
It's probably, are you gonna wanna tell?
No, my, mine's.
Cuz it'll be a little bit smaller probably than what you're using.
And mine is already not working with this system.
I have a MacBook, so mine will not be comparable with most.
And mine's.
Mine is, I'm on a.
Mine is a work issue, so I can't.
Well, I also have school stuff on mine too, and I wanna.
At least need three, four, three of them.
No.
Yeah, no, I would just.
Three.
Three.
I gotta, I can get her, yeah, mine has.
One, two, three?
Three.
So that's, it was less than, basically, it's less than a thousand dollars for the three, four, whatever. I would just have to have him give me an updated quote because that one expired, I think today. But I can then tell Maddie to put that on the agenda for the.
Yeah.
Team?
Mm-hmm.
Well, for the September meeting.
Is that the thirteenth?
I don't, I don't know.
Hold on, let me look.
Something like that, I'm gonna think about that week.
It's the tenth, wait. Is it the tenth?
Yep, it's the tenth.
Okay.
I'm getting all confused right now.
Okay.
Are we getting any people going out applications for sanitation, nothing?
I asked Maddie today, I was in here this morning.
Really?
She's not received a single one.
For a part-time law for the board, right?
Part-time.
Sanitation person, part-time.
Tony's getting those. Uh Tony's getting those, I'm focused on the board right now that I don't have.
I know that's.
So right now, I'm making decisions on my own and will move forward. I mean, what else am I supposed to do? I have appeals coming in.
We did signatures on that, there was no printed copy last month, that's where we're confused as to whether or not it was approved.
Oh, it just wasn't signed.
It was approved, but we didn't have a copy of it signed.
At least she said two people got application or?
And then brought back.
And run back, so.
Yeah, but one guy approached me and I said, go to the dump hall.
Cuz I was hoping that we would have something for today and. So I'll go this way.
No, you're good, I'll go this way.
Okay.
You need to sign it, that's what we approved last month. Yeah, he's gonna have something else too.
Oh, Nick, the budget reduction's in here.
He just signed it, didn't he?
Oh, did he? Sorry, I didn't see him walk in here, I'm like, I don't know.
Whoever's watching, I don't know.
I'm just trying to go home. I just yelled at you that it's in here and she's like, yeah, you brought it in.
Right, it's in your brain.
So, okay, so CCD, Nick, we said two sixty. Do you know how much money we're gonna get in um CEDIT or lit, it's technically lit now?
That was a, that was a question that we were gonna ask on Tuesday next month.
Okay, so and I'm just gonna, then let's just go with what we've done in the past for right now with um.
What happened?
Lit.
But it was like a big monkey.
I know.
So last year for lit, we did one thirty-five, two, I can't imagine that we're gonna get less. And it also has a balance in the bank, but you know, I think I, maybe I put, I think I put one fifty.
Yeah, I like the one fifty.
Okay, I mean, here's the thing, I think we'll get at least that, maybe some more, but if there's also money in the bank.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, okay, and then local law, I would turn opioid, so redevelopment's on hold until?
Until I have a call on Tuesday with Baker Chili.
Okay, and you have your budget meeting on Tuesday and then.
What time on Tuesday?
Eleven fifteen.
Eleven or eleven fifteen minutes, forty-five minutes.
We're gonna go eleven AM.
And then um if she, Nick, if she gets you with all, gets the forms all set up, can we all review those together before you hit submit? Like all the forms that you have to turn in to publicize, well, you actually, you won't, yeah, you won't be able to until you get her RBC numbers.
And I have a call twelve thirty on Tuesday, hopefully we'll be, hopefully it won't take too long after that.
Do you know how many um garbage cans we get?
We're gonna sit in a match.
Cuz we need to do the trash, we need a budget for how much income we're gonna have.
Before we do it.
Our house number?
A house number, so update on that, I reached out to Republic after the last meeting, asked them to put me in touch with Jim Metros, who's our, our rep, not anymore.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh-huh.
He's gone.
So I, I got the, we got the contact information for the new guy uh today, I have a business card in there, so I'll reach out to him. Um, just to inquire as to is it gonna be a mutual acceptance on, does it have to be mutual acceptance on the contract for twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Right. Yeah, and then we just need to know how much to budget to make sure we budget enough.
Right, and I can give you the count of the number of houses, you can do that.
Yeah, so yeah, so if we have the house count and then whatever that new fee would be, we can budget exactly what we need or more.
Look something for that. Change the scenery.
Then the only other one really is the, the town, so all of our budgets, um, and.
Do we get a wish list?
Yeah, we get twelve thousand in new computers eh next month.
And the only reason I bring, the only reason I bring it up is something that we've talked about a few times now, is talking about key fobs for getting in the building, so I don't know if it's for the doors, instead of having the keys.
For the doors.
Um, Jeremy has, I believe he's fobbed over there on the police side, maybe?
Well, the inside door.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's a.
Yeah.
We only have to have fobs on because that's the warming center, right, like that, the front, front door always has to be open?
The interior.
Like right here, yeah.
The interior.
Yeah, to the, the.
Yes, so then we, yeah, okay, now.
Oh, I will add it, but what, what doors are you talking about getting key fobbed?
To enter the bil- the entrances to the building, the entrance at this, this door.
The two. So the clerk, the clerk, the hallway and the front door, so three being fobbed.
Yeah. Just so that way we don't have.
You just have keys.
Okay, but then we have to have a fob, right?
But a fob is easier, a fob is easier when you have certain things in your arms.
A fob is less than a key.
Okay, so are you gonna give a number on that? Mark, Mark and Rainstorm probably can help you with that.
Yeah, I didn't know if we want, if, I'll let me talk, I'll talk to Jeremy about it, I guess.
I mean, I, I mean, might as well find out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we, I had mentioned that we didn't know where, however Jeremy went through, if it would be, be better to add on to that.
Cuz wouldn't you assume that then they're all like, like obviously for school, when we, when we used them before, like your key fob is assigned to you, obviously, and then you wave it, it knows you came in at that time.
Yeah.
So.
There's a report like that you get.
Wouldn't we have to use literally the same exact system or whatever they have, could more fobs be added on to?
Yeah, so maybe.
And and as far, like it should be like a, you know, you would have permission, like, you know, Nick's father would allow him into his office, but your father wouldn't allow you into his office.
Right.
Oh, no.
But we're not doing that. I'm speaking in the front door, I don't mean anybod-
No, but me just as an example.
I come in the back door. I come in the back door.
Except for.
I come, I come in the back door. Um, okay, so I put that on the wish list, so Roseanne, you're in charge of that, right?
Yes.
Okay. The wages for everyone, um, the only difference would be the deputy clerk at a hundred percent out of this budget. And we've got three or four applications, so I'm planning to kind of do a pre-screen phone call and answer questions they might have and then try to set up an interview with those for next week. So potentially maybe have someone to propose in September, or I guess we don't really have to do that cuz it's a part-time position.
Yeah.
But, you know, moving.
Just to talk about it, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. Um, ERC, part-time clerk hours, which would still be Jill and Maddie, I mean Jill and Michelle. So how many hours does Vernon work in custodial?
It's twenty, isn't it?
He makes twenty dollars a month.
Two times, two days, two times a week.
Five hours, yeah, so tw- no, he works ten hours a week.
Or twenty per paycheck.
Twenty. So.
Five times, yeah.
Ten hours a week, so.
What is he at now, do we know?
I think twenty, I think twenty.
Hourly.
And do we have, what salary we're gonna save, do we have?
I, I, uh, no, I think it's just a flat twenty.
Twenty, twenty?
Yeah, which is, if he works um five hundred and twenty hours, so fifty-two weeks at ten, right, that's ten thousand four hundred, so there's not quite enough budget this year for that, but, cuz it's ten thousand.
I'll maybe accounting for a couple.
Yeah, yeah.
If you won't be here on Christmas Day, if you're on Thursday, if you're next week Thursday.
Yeah. I mean, we can, if we think about that, um, stormwater board. Longevity, all the social securities, travel.
This is just you?
Legal services.
And have some.
No, not so much.
Emergency. Legal services, I increased slightly, engineering services, I left the same, I felt like, even though we spent quite a bit, we probably won't spend as much next year.
An engineer.
Yeah.
Telephone, um, I don't know if your Comcast is added into that, so for, so one twenty times phone, maybe it is. No, do you know how much the Comcast bill is?
I just saw it, there's one right on my desk.
Okay, because, well, we need to calculate Comcast in it, and then do we have to pay for your bond every year?
I'm gonna get it, I'm getting it right there.
I don't know, there's so much going on.
I think so.
Do you remember how much it costs this year? Okay, cuz we don't, oops, we don't have that in there.
I think it's roughly exactly, and then.
Can you kick the air down one please so it turns back on?
Gracias.
Well, even just a, ooh, seventy-three, oh, Jesus Christ.
I'm dying.
It was seventy-four when I came in and I bought.
I understand your logic, but like no way, that is, that is literal.
I went up one degree, don't know what it was.
I know, it was seventy-four and I dropped down to seventy-two.
Listen, we're good at seventy people, seven zero.
And you guys have never survived in my house.
Our miscellaneous, miscellaneous services are.
No, I gotta go with the hot dogs.
No way.
Yeah.
Miscellaneous services, where promotion of business went down.
I really don't care, I mean.
He applies.
Even though he's eighteen, then he's like some.
How old can he be?
Every third Wednesday.
I have to double on Wednesday, that's his issue, that's always a long day.
He's not eighteen? But your son's old enough.
I am not, I don't know, cuz we have two in the same house, so he's my son, we both can sit on the board together. He's nineteen, he's a year into adulthood.
Yeah. I have less than one, less than one before I have an adult child, so to spare yourself a child.
Your son's real high today. No way.
This is our last teen year.
Gross.
It was gross.
My baby's in September, I'm just gonna look, I'm just gonna look out happy for a while.
Need to do it.
Have your best life with that. I pick the elders.
Oh, gosh.
That's my candy to dry, so I'll take her there.
Well, I think it's a good idea of. And see what these colleges, engineers are newly graduating. Um, see if they wanna.
Well, well, you could reach out to PNW and be like, hey, we have, we have an opportunity. To get some experience under your belt.
Seventy-six.
Much later than it is.
Seventy-six.
Was it a trip out, like we were gonna sleep at the.
No, we were, we.
So I'm gonna have to fold it up because it's not very comfortable, so it's like eight forty, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, it's like a hundred degrees.
We keep your heat up.
Probably right, uh, I'm like maybe seventy-two, seventy-three.
Okay, perhaps sixty-six in the winter, but it's not cold, if you go sixty-seven, that's too hot.
Yeah, no, but there, but then like, I'll, but I know, like it's an, it'd be hot in the house, it'll be, you know, and, and like, let's try to have, I don't know, you want me to step foot in that kitchen, let her down.
That's why I'm like, use the air there.
Then he said it was right on his desk. Well, we got, and like we don't run the air, we're not.
I thought he said it was right on his desk. Did he mean that, that's the, oh.
Yeah.
He was just going to get a bill.
You made a cookies?
I'm good, thank you.
Candy corn?
About to get some candy corn, right?
Ah, I love that you love candy corn.
Listen, I love candy corn and you put it with peanuts and then taste like a pain in.
No, no, don't, don't.
I can't, yeah.
I mean, I'll eat them separate or together.
Don't ruin it.
Someone can't.
Where are the pumpkins?
So.
The pumpkin.
I prefer the candy corn for the roller, but I will eat a good pumpkin, you know, like.
Yeah.
The pumpkin.
And he loves pumpkins.
The hardest, hardest one, no, no.
Candy corn?
And it's gross.
It's terrible, it's terrible, it's gotta be that one, the original, it's like the fourth bag of our lot, it's these kind of.
Is it rocks?
Yes.
It's gotta, it's gotta be named for him, it's gotta be named for him.
Ashley's like, Mom, can I have uh some candy corn, I'm like, yeah.
Yeah.
Candy corn.
Handfuls, coming like this.
But I bought the laundry, I bought the laundry, and she's like, these are just, and they were.
I'm gonna see if it was this year, like. I put down holders also, like my keep, my stash in my locker at work is, again, usually it's a holiday, you work, too, like.
Oh, love yours.
And little snack size Carmellos. I love. You know, I just put my locker when I need a little sweet treat, or once in a while my friend's locker, if she leaves it unlocked, I'll open it and.
Oh, my, may or may not have a candy drawer at work, and my only rule is if you take candy, you better leave me candy.
No, if you put candy out.
This has gotta be like reality TV tonight for people.
It's like, if you put a house where like scavengers, like you could bring in like old food.
Oh.
Here we are.
I send all of the gross candy that my kids give for Halloween to U S C. And he's like, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm about to, I'm about to bring in for the bag of leftover Halloween candy that's still in the, like we're wanting replacements, but new Halloween candy.
It's only good right now, and once it gets, once it gets closer to back over.
It's good year round.
No, thank you. The first couple weeks that it's out, it's fine, and then it gets stale.
Yeah.
You can't allow it.
Where is this? Four, four, three, five. Where is that? Because this is what wasn't budgeted this year, that's sitting somewhere, that it's good to know it's there and not use it to the same.
I have one in my desk for.
But it's not on the budget, there's not a line. Is it under the town?
So people can't.
So while Nick's looking, there's a couple things that we need to do to finish paying Menards.
I have one under our.
When we did the additional appropriation, there were a few invoices or receipts that weren't included. So I would make a motion to pay the Menard, the remaining Menard's receipt of two thousand five hundred and five dollars and ninety-eight cents from C C D Equipment.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
We're working on it.
Whenever you're ready, we'll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, and then, so I've heard this, and I think you guys were hearing this, there was a donation that was made by Tina to the park. But when the money was received and in, it got put into general. So there's twenty-five hundred dollar donation that was expected to be used to pay for the new toys, but it's now somewhere, okay? But we need the money. So I'll make a motion to pay the new toys balance of twenty-five hundred dollars from C C D Equipment.
Second.
I'll let Roseanne have that one.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Roll call when you're ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, and then the last thing is that when the park came and asked for the town to help with the shelter project, we'll be rebuilding together in the school constructions. Um, the council approved paying for three months of the porta potty while they were there.
Yeah, because they needed it early to fulfill the need.
Only one got paid, and they've been paying the rest. So I would make a motion that we pay two months of their porta potty, so the next two months, so September, October, whatever it is. Two months of their porta potty from the um C B I T services.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please, when you're ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think that takes care of all of the loose ends. And then, like I said, in September, the computer bid's coming to replace all those that need to be upgraded. And three from the council, uh, so you'll have that.
Yeah, because I have to have him update his quote because it expired.
You can actually go in and, oh, okay.
Wait, it, I think expires today, so I need another expiration date for the quote.
Did you find that line or no? That I was asking you?
I did not, although they were counted in the one spot.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, we'll get.
No, 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 I, so I feel like we still like, I don't think that the, I don't think that the general.
Would you say four, four, three?
Four, 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 three.
I don't think it's, it's uh terrible, but I still wanna look at it a little bit more, the general. And Roseanne and Tina are gonna look at R B C. We need the trash numbers, um, and a few more numbers of like what we're gonna get. Miscellaneous revenue, Nick, we need to know that, cause we're gonna be over budgeted. We always are, or we tend to be. But we have miscellaneous revenue, like building fees and those kinds of things that we put in, and Tina will probably help you with this or tell you where to go. Like all of our investment from Trust and Deanna, all that money is miscellaneous revenue, and that's what then offsets when we're over. Do you understand? But that's the non-tax, non. Okay, so that number we're still missing. Um, but we're, yeah, compared, we're not much over last year. So, oh, well, I don't know, I don't know if I'd say we're good, because the Cleveland Cliffs appeal is still not decided, which could be a loss of seventy-seven thousand. How much are we losing in tax caps? Cause I think we're losing money this year. Okay, tax caps, we'll be losing some money. Um, so the actual dollar increase from last year's levy to this year's levy is ninety-nine thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars. Potentially, we may not get it. So being where it budgeted where we are, very tight, I, in my opinion, is better.
Right.
So miscellaneous revenue will make a big difference.
We talked about that.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, no, I think so, and making sure our reserves continue to build for, and noting that C D, lit, you know, is going to expire in twenty, twenty-seven. I mentioned to these guys, January, I'm gonna have a reminder, we can move um C C D up to five cents. And we need to do that. It has to be done before May to be able to budget it in for the following year.
Gotta do it.
That's all I have.
It's well, we're, we're gonna have to.
Yes, thank you, Julie, for that.
You better not say nine. Okay, so, are we done?
We, we can go.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
We're not even having a session, sorry.
But Jen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I for yes. Yes, I'm in favor.
Curious.
Hey, you don't hear the, could you stop it?
She's gotta pick the hand first.
Oh.
Thank you, everyone.
We won't charge for the entertaining things.
Right, the reality.